Good evening, welcome to a regular County Commission meeting Tuesday, November 9. Do I have Pastor Dean Wilkinson here? Come on up, sir.
Dear God, we approach you humbly, recognizing who we are and who you are. We are humans, made in your image, but we confess that we make mistakes. Not one of us is perfect. We do not have all of the answers. But God, you are the King of the universe, who is the rightful ruler of everything. You know all things, you can do all things, and you love perfectly. Your word says in James 1:5-6, "Now if any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask God, who gives to all generously and without criticizing, and it will be given to him. But let him ask in faith without doubting." We come to you tonight in faith, acknowledging who we are and who you are. God, we ask for your wisdom. We ask that you would give this board wisdom to make every decision this evening, and that that would be result in the flourishing of every citizen, family, and business of this county in your name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. We have a formal call this meeting to order. Commissioner Tobias, sir?
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Smith, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
I'll read this, and then I'll give you the floor.
Thank you.
Whereas American Indians, Sonia, and Alaska natives were the original inhabitants of the land that now constitutes the United States, and whereas American Indians and Alaska natives have traditionally exhibited a respect for the finiteness of natural resources through a reverence for the earth, and whereas American Indians and Alaska natives have served with valor in all of America's wars, beginning with the Revolutionary War through the conflict in the Persian Gulf, and whereas American Indians and Alaska natives have made distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art, and whereas this recognition will encourage self-esteem, pride, and self-awareness in American Indians and Alaska natives of all ages, and whereas November is a time when many Americans commemorate a special time in the history of the United States when American Indians and English settlers celebrated the bounty of their harvest and the promise of new kinships. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of November 2021 as National Native American Heritage Month. Done ordered and adopted in regular session this ninth day of November 2021. Madam Chair, I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Lober. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0.
You have the floor.
We're extremely honored to be here today to accept this proclamation and to be live in Wickham Park again this year. It's a different time. We are through many challenges, and we're coming live to the entire community and all of our visitors from throughout the United States and possibly abroad. We haven't seen if we've got any travel coming in from out of the country yet, but we'll keep our fingers crossed that some of them will make it here for this weekend, starting Friday. And Friday, we have our children's program starting at 10 o'clock, so we hope that anybody and everybody who has reached out to any classes can get the word out that our educational program will take off this year and really excel with the Added Village by Jim Sawgrass, which is going to do a demonstration of East meets West, giving us parallel comparisons between cultures here and west of Mississippi. And today, we brought a wonderful flute player with us, Zita Gibbs, who'd love to give you an example of what type of music we're going to be hearing from the stage. Concerts will be going on from 9 o'clock till 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday, and 9 o'clock to 6 o'clock on Sunday. And Zita, would you like to take it away and talk a little bit about the flute? I'll step out of the way.
Actually, the flute is very, very flexible. We have a young man that will be playing this weekend who warms up to AC/DC. Everything in between, jazz, country, spirituals, so don't let my soft approach mislead you.
We also have Claire Ellis with us, who has been instrumental in working our community partnerships to make sure that our sponsors and our supporters are recognized. Come on up, Claire.
I'd just like to say, please, come out to the most beautiful cultural event that's free for the whole family, alcohol-free, beautiful learning experience for children. Bring your lawn chairs, bring blankets, and you will certainly enjoy seeing everything, taking everything in and listening to the most beautiful music. It's a happy place all weekend, a learning experience. Come, bring your neighbors, bring your families, bring the children. They can learn so much about the Native American culture. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Certainly.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Did you say alcohol-free or free alcohol? That has a big difference.
Alcohol, drugs, and we have to add politics. Sorry.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Which way? Claire, Zita.
Take care. Thank you. All right, I've got a resolution, not to take away from the resolution we just handled, that also proclaims this month as a particular month. Just going to go ahead and read the meat of it here. Whereas family courts regularly hear matters involving parental time sharing, previously termed custody, child support, adoption, termination of parental rights, emancipation of minors, truancy, and other matters involving minor children, and whereas families deserve to have their disputes resolved in a fair, timely, and efficient manner, and whereas unless impractical, all pending family cases involving the same family ought to be heard before the same judge, and whereas minor children must be protected from abuse and other forms of harm, and whereas decisions involving minor children should always consider the safety and well-being of impacted children, and whereas judges rightfully look toward the best interest of the child when making decisions impacting those minor children, and whereas better outcomes are the likely result of decision-makers having additional relevant information, and whereas efforts to ensure family court participants and stakeholders are apprised of relevant information and opportunities to increase their knowledge in the field are to be encouraged and commended. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of November as Family Court Awareness Month in Brevard County in order to recognize and support the family court system for their positive impact on our community's children. Go ahead and make a motion to approve.
A motion and a second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0.
We may have a card. I don't know if we've gotten one yet.
I don't, sir.
Okay, we'll go.
Can I?
Yeah, if you will, when you're done, though.
I asked if I had to fill one out. She said I didn't have to.
Perfect. Yeah, as long as we get it before the end of the meeting, we're golden. Please.
Hi, I'm Angie Martinez. I'm a 15-year resident of Brevard County. I love living here, and I'm very happy to be raising my children here. A few years ago, I entered a world that I never knew existed, the world of family court. As a society, we engage, we encourage and empower victims of domestic violence to be brave and leave these relationships. We know that children exposed to violence, whether physical, sexual, or emotional, suffer from what is known as ACE, adverse childhood experiences, which leads to future physical and mental health problems, as well as future victimization and perpetration. We know that domestic violence is about power and control and punishment for noncompliance, and we'd be naive to think that the power and control dynamic ends with the ending of the relationship. What happens is the dynamic often shifts to what is known as post-separation abuse, and when children are involved, the family court system can become the platform. Both parents are labeled as high conflict, but it only takes one abusive parent in a courtroom to create what looks like a high conflict situation. Parents' demonstrated capacity to communicate with each other and co-parent is codified in Florida statute 6113 as a significant factor to determine time sharing of children. This is drilled into survivors' heads when they enter the system. While it might be a good goal for most divorcing couples, it can be devastating in abuse cases. Helpers such as guardian ad litem, attorneys, and even therapists will threaten survivors, saying they could lose their kids altogether if they cannot co-parent and communicate better with their abuser. While this seems insane, we quickly learn that statistically, this threat is actually true. In the United States, it's startling that empirical data shows when a protective parent asks for help with an abusive situation, the abusing parent often sees an increase in time sharing. In many cases, the court places the child with the abusive parent full-time. Our system perpetuates the myth that anything that happened in the family prior to the separation is no longer relevant. Children are not looked at as humans with feelings, fears, and emotions, but as property that parents have rights to. Our family court system holds children's emotional, even physical, lives in their hands. According to the Center for Judicial Excellence, since 2008, over 110 children in the United States have been murdered by a parent when going through a separation, divorce, or related matter. One of these, Grayson Kessler, a four-year-old little boy, was murdered by his father just two hours south of here in Florida six months ago. His mom, Allison, pleaded with the judge days before the murder not to force her child to go with the father, and she was denied this request. These situations have been happening for years. There's no learning from the mistakes, and there's no avenue for honest and truthful discussions based on factual studies and what experts know about the dynamics of domestic violence, abuse, and trauma. Instead, the case number is filed, and the system goes on to the next victim, leaving a trail of emotional trauma for families and children. I'm new to this world of advocacy, but I have learned that the first step towards change is awareness, simply just letting people know that these things are happening. As of today, over 200 states, cities, and counties throughout the country have declared November as Family Court Awareness Month, and 32 of these are in Florida. Hundreds of volunteers are actively pursuing legislative change, which we hopefully soon will come to Florida, known as Grayson's Law. This is the mission of Family Court Awareness Month, and I'm honored that Brevard County, and especially our commissioners, are brave and willing to support this first step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a resolution?
Who knows? They get so angry.
It's all about a motion.
Those are two great resolutions. Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Lober, thank you for bringing those tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. We're moving into consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have any that need polled? I want to poll item F-17.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to poll item F-16 and just vote no without comment.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay, can I have a motion to approve items 1 through F-16 with Commissioner Tobias voting no?
You've got that.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Lober. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Zonka. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Commissioner Lober, I know these are your appointments, and I would vote you on any board you ever wanted to be on, sir. You're completely qualified.
I appreciate that.
I have a struggle with your planning and zoning. I'm not sure it's a good fit. I did this to Commissioner Tobias in my first year as well. He brought up one. So I just, I think that's an important board, and I do have a problem with the capability of this and the fact that the person's running for office as well. So I just want to throw that out, and I'm going to be voting no on this one, but...
I understand. I respect your opinion. I don't share it with respect to this particular item. I'll go ahead and move to approve F-17.
Okay. Commissioner Zonka and Tobias Zonka first.
Yeah, I won't be voting for approval of your planning and zoning. I mean, partially because the person's running for office and didn't really express an interest that I was aware of, of sitting on a board before that. And I also take issue with some of the things that are claimed during many of the public comments and many of the issues that this individual has spoken on in the attacks on commission and on staff, and not just of county, but of other municipalities, and I just, I don't think that it's a good fit, because I think the zoning board is set, is supposed to be a board based on facts, based on experience, and I don't believe that she holds the qualifications as well, on top of the many other reasons why I don't think it's a good fit. So I'll be voting no for that as well.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I understand your no vote many years ago. What I was unaware of when I nominated that individual was his personal attacks on a commissioner. Had I known that, I certainly would not have supported him for that position. That being said, this individual has personally attacked a commissioner. I don't care where her beliefs are or ideas, whether they're contrary to mine, but I do have an issue with attacking someone personally up here on the board. I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a good fit. So even if my ideas aligned 100% with hers, that's, you know, crossing a line, and I think there are other ways to voice your opinion without attacking somebody up here. It's a lesson I learned, and certainly I think that's a lesson that this individual should learn, whether they want to participate in a advisory group or whether they want to sit up here. It's a hard one to learn, but one that is extremely important, coming from somebody that had to go through that. So that being said, I can't support this individual.
Commissioner Lober, sir?
Just one thought. If the standard is whether an individual personally attacked the commissioner or not, then we should not have approved the last P&amp;Z alternate member that we approved on this body. I'm happy to set an agenda item for our next meeting or any other meeting that folks want. This is something to ensure that there's parity, to offset the impact that that individual, who again has personally attacked the commissioner up here, and worse than that, has objectively lied about that commissioner in writing, also verbally, to my understanding. We can get into that if we need to, but I recall we just had this discussion regarding the last P&amp;Z alternate member who was appointed, and I had voiced my, my feeling that that's not an individual I would have appointed, but out of deference to the individual commissioner whose appointment it is, I'd be willing to put that person on there. So if we don't want to have parity, and we want to pick and choose, then we can go ahead and shoot this down, but if we want to have parity, then I think we need to readdress that other appointment as well. So I'm going to be voting yes on this. If I don't have a second, I guess there is no vote, though. But I do intend to bring that other item up, because I think we need to be fair to everyone and treat everyone identically.
Okay, Commissioner Lober, I don't know about that. I just...
I do.
I know, I don't, I don't disbelieve you. I just, I just don't think this is a good fit on this board. And when I did it the other time, I know Commissioner Tobias said there was that, but I just didn't think the man was a good fit either, because it's the P&amp;Z board.
Okay.
We have a hard time getting there. They're very, very qualified, and it's just, I just think it's a really important board. I just found out, Commissioner Tobias, you brought up some great ideas last meeting. We're going to implement them, but it made me search, and the fellow I had nominated wasn't showing up, so I am replacing him with, with a better candidate as well. So Commissioner Tobias?
And just as a side note, I was completely unaware of an individual personally attacking. There's any evidence of that. I wish it would have been brought forward before, because I don't do a public record request on communication with nominations, you know, but I think that that's probably a worthwhile discussion, whether it's someone in the past or whether it's someone in the, in the future. I think that you can get your points across better without attacking an individual. And again, please feel free to bring that forward, because I think that that causes a great, a great problem. It was one I was unaware of.
I appreciate that. I will absolutely do that.
Commissioner Lober, can we approve all your others first and just make that real clean, and then do another motion?
Sure, if you'd like. For the time being, I'll go ahead and withdraw the motion that I just made. I'll move to appoint all others but the P&amp;Z alternate at this point.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0, and you're just going to work with that later?
I'm going to make the motion. If it dies for lack of a second, which sounds like it'll be, then that's that. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the, the single additional appointee on there for P&amp;Z alternate.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, sir, it does die for lack of a second.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move to public comments. I have one public comment card, Mr. Dennis Dyer. Hi, sir.
My name is Dennis Dyer, and I live in Turtle Mountain, Lake Washington area, and I have a dog problem next door. Bet you never heard of that. Anyway, it's, extends beyond barking, but let's talk about that only tonight. For ordinance is 1457. Paragraph A says, "No animal shall be permitted or allowed to create a nuisance. It is a violation of this article for the owner of an animal to permit or allow that animal to cause a nuisance." Man, that's great. I like that. And then paragraph B takes it all away. If I could surmise, it says that a dog can bark continuously for 30 minutes. He gets 30-second break, then he can do it 30 minutes more. Well, that's one minute, an hour. 24-hour today, that means he has to be quiet 24 minutes. I go to the Animal Control, and they say...
You changed it?
Sorry. We don't make laws.
I'll start pens with these times.
So I was here seven, eight months ago, and the results was that Mr. Joe...
Sir? We changed that. That, that ordinance is no longer in existence.
Didn't get back to me. I'm sorry, I'm taking your time.
No problem.
I hope it is more representative.
I'm glad we fixed your problem.
Sir?
I'm glad we fixed your problem. You didn't even know it.
No, I did not know it.
We just did it.
Mr. Hildebrand said he'd call me back, but...
Abby, do you remember when we did that?
I thank you, Commissioner Smith.
I think it was July.
It was definitely this year, though.
I think it was July when we did it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
I hope I don't have to come back.
Thank you, sir.
We need to.
See, you're welcome to come back if you'd like, though.
Glad we could help. Okay, we're closing public comments, moving into item H1.
Good evening, commissioners. Item H1 is a request for the board to consider the approval of a traffic impact credit reimbursement agreement between Brevard County, the city of West Melbourne, and DHIC Hammock Landing LLC, the developer. The agreement would entitle the developer to receive $296,537,000 for, in impact fee credits for intersection improvements on mitten, healed, and of the project's driveway. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. This will be the first of two public hearings for the item.
Okay, Commissioner Tobias, your district, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we're looking at how close this is between District 3 and 5. It's literally right on the border. I, I support this, but certainly would like to hear District 5, whose backyard this would go into as well.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that. Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Zonka. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Item I-1.
Bear with me. Of course, my page closes on the right as you call it up.
Okay, Commissioner Lober, I think this is going to be your item, sir.
Yes. The, the short of it is, there are a couple of different options that are listed there, which I'm trying to stall in order to pull up as I'm speaking, and I've gotten it now, so I don't need to stall any longer.
Okay.
The, the short of it is, as I said, there are a couple of different options that are out there. I think there are a couple of them that are livable. To me, the biggest concern was if we have folks who regularly use a particular facility, that we not put them in a position where they can't hold their event on a particular weekend. So that, the option that would be the easiest for the folks who are partners with the county in that sense is option 3, where we would have a particular community center throughout each large portion of the county, so north, central, south, if you divide it in that fashion, that would be identified, that has a physically separate building in which a gun show could be held, where it wouldn't come into contact with any other program that's taking place. I think that's, at a minimum, a good option, an option that I have a slight preference toward, but frankly, I can live without if, if folks just aren't pleased with it, would be to have a notice requirement for recreation partners if someone wishes to make use... make use of a particular facility that they ordinarily would use. Say they use it every Friday or every Saturday at a given time. I'm not dead-set in 90 days. I think 60 days was floated as a particular option. If we want to keep it at 90, that's fine, or 120, that's fine as well. Staff certainly will, will do everything they can, have spoken with staff about this, to find an equivalent or essentially identical option during the same time, or to reschedule if they'd prefer. But again, we'd be giving them at least that 90-days' notice unless the Board wants to extend that. So I would just ask that we either have a motion for option two, with or without the 90 days. I would have some, you know, some number there, at least 60 days, maybe up to 120 days. Or alternatively, option three would be fine as well. I would just ask that we, we not go with option one, which would simply disallow the, the event based on the content.
Okay, Commissioner Tabia, be to, Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm happy to hear that you are doing away, or that your preference was two or three, because I had some issues with two. I think anytime you displace a scheduled county activity, whether it be, as the Chairman said, karate, or anything else, I think that probably takes preference. There are some, that takes out one of the three, and maybe you can work with me on the other one.
Sure.
You mentioned previously that the purpose of this is to ensure content neutrality, that is, not to discriminate against gun show proprietors. I agree, but this could go both ways. Someone wanting to sell bibles shouldn't be treated any worse than someone wanting to put on a gun show.
Agreed.
As such, I would ask that other non-dangerous commercial activities be subject to the same policies, with the narrow exception of those provisions specific to weapons, such as tagging them. So I certainly don't, as you mentioned, want to set up a policy that is strictly for guns. I think then we are making a decision on one, and there are many other ones that could fall in there. So I'd like it general. And then, second, Madam Chair, second one, I do have some questions for Mr. Visco. Is that okay?
Did he know he was going to get called on? Definitely not.
You know, while we're waiting on him, I was asking, you know, they set this up the night before at the gun show. So I was thinking, we have all these guns in a single place all evening, so I don't know how they guard it.
The way that we were addressing that, and I believe it was brought up in the prior item, is if they're guns on the premises, they have to have at a minimum, and if, if the scope is something that would necessitate more, obviously, this is just the floor, not, not a ceiling by any means, they'd have to have one law enforcement officer in addition to an ATF officer.
All night.
Anytime the guns are, are present. So if they're, if they're not there in the evening, they don't need to babysit an empty room. But if they have firearms there during the evening, they would have to have one ATF officer, and then over and above that, at least one law enforcement officer. If it's in unincorporated Brevard, 99% chance it's going to be a gentleman wearing green. I don't know that this is something that frankly is ever going to be in, in an incorporated area, but if it is, more likely than not, it would probably not be BCSO in addition to ATF. It would just be whatever the municipality's law enforcement agency would be.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Tabia, I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Visco, did your department review this proposal?
Yes, we did.
Great. Risk management has certain procedures that they generally follow for all vendors. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you describe the, the typical insurance requirements?
Primarily, the basic insurance requirements for a million dollars, a, a basic business policy. In some cases, with the nature of the event, we'll ask for additional coverage, and I think in this particular event, we're looking for a $2 million minimum.
So the minimum is at least required here?
Yes, sir.
Is that fair? Okay. In researching best practices, did your department review similar policies in other jurisdictions?
Yes, sir.
And did you, did you find any additional procedures or policies typical in those, but not in the proposal that we have here?
No, I think we're comfortable with the proposal as, as presented today.
Okay. And finally, tell me about indemnification. Is that included in the proposal?
Standard contract that you enter into with the county, special events permits and such, all carry indemnification language.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was unaware, of course, that the sponsor of this was, was willing to go with three as opposed to two. My major issues were with that. Clearly, he's done the work dealing with county staff and, and risk management, so if it's, if it's District, sorry, if it's option three, I certainly will be supporting that, and I appreciate the sponsor's willingness to work through this and come up with a good work product that will not only benefit, hopefully, if this is tailored towards everyone and not just guns, this is something that is a fair and level playing field for everyone that wants to get involved.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that's gnawing at me, and I think Commissioner Tabia, you brought this up last time, that you were concerned that we would be competing with private enterprise? And you're satisfied that we're, we're not going to be competing now?
There are enough provisions in this where I'm comfortable with, with folks having this as an option. My large issue was, and I spoke with Mr. Krantis on this, the hotel and bed tax is addressed only on hotel nights, it's not on convention space. So that was a, something that made me feel a little bit more comfortable than what would otherwise. Taxpayers would not be out a penny on this one if overtime was needed. I spoke with Parks and Rec, and it's something that they could fill. It sounds like this is something that would not be, certainly with guns, standard practice. Wouldn't, this is not something that we would be seeing on a, on a, you know, a constant basis. So I don't think, in my best guess, in speaking with some folks, especially some of the hotel folks, this is not something that, you know, is a blip on their radar. So for that reason, and Commissioner Loeb's willingness to work through some of the issues, I, I'll be supporting it.
Okay, I'm good.
Commissioner Loeb?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a couple of thoughts. As far as that last concern goes, the, the goal, and I understand sometimes there are unintended consequences, but the goal is not to try to lure anyone away from an existing facility. Frankly, as, as a guy that's been to a number of different gun shows over a number of different years, I would be very surprised to see the Melbourne Auditorium not continue to have the gun show. If they make their conditions infinitely more onerous, maybe that might drive the folks out, but I, I think if, if the terms remain the same down there, given the attendance they just had the last time they held it, they're probably going to continue to have a show there for the foreseeable future. The Moose Lodge, which has a separate group, which has been using that at least this most recent year, I would like to think that they're going to continue to use the Moose Lodge. We're just offering folks more options. So I'm, I'm not looking to lure anyone. I'm not saying, come to Brevard and do this, but if it's something that you're interested in doing, it's available. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to go with option three, just based on the, the comments we've had so far, making a note that with respect to the, the text of the option, that this is something that we should use with respect to any other, any other non-dangerous activity where the, the sponsor or the applicant is seeking to use a comparable facility. Would that cover it for you?
Motion for option three with all of that?
Is that good, Commissioner? Yeah, I would second that, Madam Chair.
And a second with Commissioner Tabia with all that? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes 5-0. I bet they're going to have to go back and listen to the...
Sorry, guys.
Okay, we're going to move into items J1 and J2. Eddie, Mrs. Eddie? Eddie, are you wanting to do these both together or separate, sir?
I think we ought to do them separate, Madam Chair, respectfully.
We can, we can do them separate.
Okay, he's got some things that kind of have to piggyback with each other, so I wanted to give him the option.
Thank you, Board. This item is permission to advertise the utility rates resolution for the Barefoot Bay encompassing the Barefoot Bay Water Sewer District. Under the requested action, there's a few layers to this. The first one is to receive permission to advertise for the public hearing for the attached rate resolution. In addition to that, per Florida statute and section, and county ordinance 98185, we are required to advertise 10 days prior to hearing. The Barefoot Bay ordinance also specifies that the public hearing be done at 5:00 or later. The question, the next question for the Board would be, do we want to add this public hearing notification to the utility bills? And if so, do we want to make this concurrent with the county advertisement for the rate resolution, which ties into the J2 item? To give you a little background, so in order to put it on the utility bills, Barefoot Bay billing is done by Brevard County. So we have the ability to do this in a quick fashion, which would mean we could have this out on the December bills, come back in January for public hearing, and then if the Board approves it, have those rate resolutions utilized in February. The county, however, a lot of our billing relies on City of Melbourne, City of Cocoa, and they require 45 to 60-days' notice to put any notifications on their bills, which would mean if we received permission to advertise and request, and the Board's request is to put that on the utility bills for the rates, and I guess this is where Madam Chair was saying, it kind of cross over with each other, we would, we couldn't put these on until the January, I think, or, I'm sorry, February, and then we would come back in March for the rate resolution for the countywide, and then we would have those utilized in April. So it's really a question of, one, permission to advertise the Barefoot Bay rate resolution, two, if it's the desire of the Board for these to be placed on the utility bills, and then, three, if it's the desire of the Board to have the public hearing for Barefoot Bay and the county, which is item J2, on the same commission meeting agenda. There would be two separate public hearings, but on the same agenda.
Thank you, sir. You guys pushed your lights more than once, and it turned your little name off. So I think Commissioner Loeb, I have you logged in for sure. Commissioner Smith, that's an old one for you, correct? Okay, so Commissioner Tabia, were you trying to push? Okay, Commissioner Loeb, I'm going to let you start, and Commissioner Tabia, you're next, sir.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Actually, the order works out pretty well. Commissioner Tabia, this is something that, that falls within your district. I'm going to support whatever you want to do on this, but I would ask that you give some strong consideration to adding an advertisement on the utility bills. I'll tell you with the next item that's upcoming, I'm not going to support it if it doesn't have it on the utility bills. That is something that, that impacts my district, but as far as the, oh wait, we doing J1 or J2? It's reversed on my, on my agenda now.
Mine, too.
Well, I think the numbers are right, it's just upside down.
We're talking about Barefoot Bay right now. It's backwards on this, I'm sorry. That really threw me for a loop.
Do you have, J1 is Barefoot Bay, though? I think they're just listed backwards.
Yeah, I think it's backwards on the, on the agenda copy we got today. I'm sorry, that, that completely threw me off.
Okay, J1, sir.
So as to Barefoot Bay, just to be abundantly clear, I would just encourage you to strongly consider putting it on the utility bills. The fact that we have to advertise it in a newspaper of general circulation is absolutely meaningless in my book. I don't think you're going to get a soul that sees that. If you actually want public comment or people to have the opportunity to make that comment, this is the cleanest possible way to do that. I'll support it any which way, but I would just ask you to, to consider that, please.
Commissioner Tabia, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve provision to advertise for public hearing the attached rate resolution under the requirements set forth in Florida statute, section 153.11, and county ordinance, section 98185, concurrent with any advertisements necessary for the county advertisements with item J2.
Okay, so you're making a motion as is in there. Wonderful. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith?
If I may, Madam Chair, just wanted to be clear that J1 on, on the agenda is for the Barefoot Bay.
Barefoot Bay, yes, ma'am.
So technically, you sit with that hat on for the Barefoot Bay District, and then J2, being the county, you have a different hat. So I want to keep the motions very separate because you are sitting currently as the Barefoot Bay.
So for the Barefoot Bay Board, I have a motion by Commissioner Tabia, a second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 5-0. Do you need a motion from him about the public hearing, sir? Are you good now?
I think we need one for item J2 also for a motion.
We're going to do J2 next.
Yes.
Yes, but you're going with J1?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's do item J2. Commissioner Tabia, I think that's an old light?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Loeb, sir?
I've got a, a motion I'm ready to make, but I just want to make sure with Abby that we, we don't need to read anything into the record, just for clarity's sake, if nothing else.
Well, this is for the county system, so I mean, basically, whatever your motion would be, we can...
Okay, as long as, yeah, as long as we don't have to read anything else into the record, I just want to make sure we don't have an issue on a technicality.
Okay, you're going to make one on...
Oh, you can, as far as introduction, I mean, you can have Eddie introduce it if you'd like.
Maybe just a really brief intro, and then I'll go ahead and make the motions. Is that all right, Madam Chair?
Yes, you're going to make a motion that advertise, how to advertise, and whether or not we can bring it to the public hearing when we have a meeting.
Okay, let me, let me just, let's, let's do those one by one, and then we'll have them do the advertisement before the vote. Is that okay?
So you want to do three motions?
Okay, so as far as your, let's do the order you, you addressed them, and you said whether to advertise in the utility bills?
Permission to advert, oh, that will be how to advertise. You can put both those together.
Yeah, in addition to the statutory requirements, the motion contemplates advertising it on the utility bills.
Okay.
Next one?
And if it's okay with him bringing it to a county commission meeting for the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion contemplates that and the affirmative as well, yes.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith? All in favor? Do I have any more lights on? I don't. You're looking. You did have a light on?
I just put one on.
I'm sorry, I thought you were trying because you were like making that. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Loeb, what, what's the additional cost for that advertisement?
Eddie, can you help me out? Phone a friend here.
With regard to the utility bills?
Yes.
I don't believe that they charge us for that. I think they provide that as a courtesy. You're talking with related to the City of Melbourne and City of Cocoa?
That, yes.
For the billing? That's my understanding, Commissioner.
Have we, Madam Chair?
When I did it for the project I did, I, I just put in the bills, and it wasn't, there wasn't any cost to it. I mailed them out to everybody in that area, if that helps, but I don't know about the other cities.
I can confirm it, but that's my understanding historically with, with billing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 5-0. Okay, I thought that one was going to be a little lengthier. Oh, I have cards, I'm going to go ahead and call them, I'm so sorry. I have Ms. Sandra Sullivan.
This on J1 or J2, Madam Chair?
J2, sir.
Okay.
And if it changes anything, we can always recall.
Yeah, if there's something we need to revisit.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Sandra Sullivan sells Patrick Shores. When we look at the, the last year in terms of costs that have gone up, we've had a 28% increase in garbage, 33% assessment on fire, a solid waste increase, and in the last meeting, in garbage, 33% assessment on fire, a solid waste increase, and in the last meeting, there was an agenda item as well for transporting trash because the Sarna running out of space, and we don't know yet if that's gonna come back to the taxpayers as well, because that question wasn't answered. I looked up the CPI for, this is water, sewer, and trash, and it's between 2% and 3%. This is from the United States CPI, Urban Consumer Water and Sewer Trash Collection Services Moody's Analytics. The rate increase, if you average it out, is 7.9% each year over five years, ranging from 6.5 increase to 8.5 on three of those years. I am a little bit, have a question. We had ARPA funds of $58 million, of which 40 million of that is being used by the county for infrastructure, and I'm just wondering, you know, why these funds that came in are not being used to offset these costs. We have a lot of veterans in Florida, particularly here in Brevard County, with 67,000 veterans on fixed incomes, as well as, you know, retirees. And I would suggest this many increases in one year is going to be very difficult on the people who are on fixed incomes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I have Mr. Ronald, Ron, Ronald, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce that, Dr. Gudis?
Dr. Gudis.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Tobias. Oh, off light. Hello, sir, if you would just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ronaldus J. Dr. Gudis.
I would have never got that first name, sir, thank you.
It's pretty easy.
I don't know.
But I'll take back my time since it's ticking.
You got it, I'll give you six seconds.
So I got a couple of seconds left. 3054 is the residence at the moment, Pineeta Crossings Drive. It was stated just earlier for the water and wastewater, that the Consumer Price Index is gonna be charged at, and I'm gonna round the number, at 8%. Now, there are a lot of seniors here, a lot of military people here, and they're getting a 5.62% increase, but it, we all know it's gonna be eaten up by Medicare. And we go through the motions, and when I look at here, am I seeing this right correctly, how it's written? I'm asking a question here. Every year, these rates are gonna be installed, and I have worked in front of the Florida Public Service Commission, and every year you go back for an index adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index for water and wastewater utilities. If I'm not seeing it clearly here, please state so, but to have 8% for 2023, 24, 25 is egregious. You should be adjusting it every year. Every year, you should have written in here, and hopefully I'm reading this wrong, every year you should be looking at this. And then I go to the other issue, because I've dealt with public utilities that are not privately owned. And I'm just getting into the county stuff now, and I'm gonna start looking at this. But I have noticed in the past where there are transfers from utilities, water, may it be wastewater, to general funds. And I have not had the time to look at it, and I'd hope you guys look at this going forward here, since this isn't only a resolution. There should be reserve accounts to take care of this. And if you're backpedaling because of short falls in the past, it should be done like private enterprise, even though you have the take to do this, you lose. Every year, it should be looked at, and correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Thank you, sir.
And I want this looked at by everyone. Thank you. I've exceeded.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Madam Chair, ma'am.
Let's let him sit down first, okay? Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Pleasure meeting you all today.
You, too.
Likewise.
Commissioner Loeb, sir.
A few thoughts, and I'm just gonna share, I don't want to spend too, too long on this, but I just want to share a couple of things that pertain to what we just heard. First, my understanding from the get-go, from the time I was elected to now, has been that, that our sewer system is run essentially as enterprise fund. It's not a for-profit venture. It would be, and I'm not saying that the statement was incorrect that was made, that a transfer, transfers took place from utilities to the general fund, but I would be shocked if there weren't some extremely extenuating reason for that, or if the amount were miniscule, and it was being returned based upon perhaps some error where it shouldn't have ended up there in the first place. Again, they're run as enterprise funds, not as for-profit ventures, or as, as a means to pad our general fund by essentially getting one over on the ratepayers. I'd be very interested to hear more with respect to that. If there's a specific transfer or transfers that you're aware of, please send it to my office, I'll add an agenda item myself, so that we can address it if that is the case. As far as the specific percentage, and whether we're talking utilities, or whether we're talking, let's say, public works with roads and bridges, we've got, and I'm not gonna say it's COVID's fault, COVID's fault, everyone's tired of hearing it, I'm tired of hearing it, but the fact of the matter is we have supply chain issues, which don't simply drag things on, which they do, but they also increase the cost because supply has gone down. We've got minimum wage slated to go up substantially in the near future, and inflation, as Commissioner Smith has mentioned in prior meetings, is gonna be out of whack in very short order, it's already started down that path. The bottom line is, nothing is getting cheaper, certainly nothing with respect to utilities. CPI, as it pertains to a utility-specific index, is a great index to use, but general CPI is meaningless when it comes to either roads, bridges, or wastewater. What the actual industry is facing as far as their cost increases, that's the question. We had adjusted that in the recent past here, it may have been a year at this point, but ballpark roughly a year ago, we had adjusted from a general CPI to an index that was specific to the utility industry, again, because we're running an enterprise fund, and if we don't cover our costs, something else or someone else has to subsidize that, so we would need potentially non-ratepayers to subsidize ratepayers in order to keep a percentage artificially low, just because it's an unpleasant number. Certainly, as far as the ARPA comment that was made before, whether we're dealing with CAREs or ARPA, whether it's something that's directly permitted, or whether it's through revenue replacement, of course, there could be funds that could go any which way, and of course, there could be adjustments that are made, and whether, whether it's better to try to, to pad things and to a degree subsidize using those dollars, the ratepayers, or whether it's something that's better to go toward infrastructure that improves things for the entire county, not, not just ratepayers, it's a subjective question. I don't know that there's a right or a wrong, it just depends on, on your particular feelings with respect to it. But I would just caution folks, again, whether it's roads and bridges, or even what we had just dealt with in fire rescue, there are reasons that costs sometimes do have to go up, and I, I pay taxes, I pay over $10,000 a year in property tax, and I hate writing a five-digit check for the privilege of living here, but I do it because it is what it is at a certain point. I don't want that number to go up any higher. But the, the bottom line is, like fire rescue, and we're not doing it anymore, thank God, we were reserved spending for years. That's a horrible practice to have done. It's not sustainable, and it's something where even if you want to maintain the status quo, and you're happy with service levels, at a certain point, the pot runs dry. And I'm, yeah, I'm not saying that's the case with this. I'm not saying that's the case with this, but the bottom line is, there are profound issues with our utility system. We have lift stations that had a design life for 25 to 30 years. They are older than I am in many cases, they are older than, than, than from the time we had man step foot on the moon. These things are time bombs that are waiting to go off, and unless we want to have an issue like Titusville had, unfortunately, not in the too far recent past, where we're putting, where we're measuring in the millions of pounds, or millions of gallons of untreated raw effluent going right into the river, unfortunately, there's a cost to upgrading our system to a state where it's at least standard. Right now, we've got a lot of issues that are substandard, where we're gonna have issues, and frankly, you can't complain that the river isn't good, but we don't want to allow the commission to do anything to fix it. So I, in deference to our chair, I'll shut up, I've gone on longer than I intended to, but there are a lot of reasons that are behind the, the rate increases. It's not that we're doing it just to be mean, or just because we can, none of us profit personally from making anything more expensive for anyone.
Thank you, sir. He always fulfilled the, the information, so, I don't know what he wrote you, but I'm interested now. We're getting ready to move to item J three, but just on that note, too, they printed out 33% more money, we're gonna be seeing 33% more inflation before this is over. I mean, that's just financial common sense, so we'll see what happens, and see what people can start tweaking here. Frank, are you doing this one, or?
Oh, yeah. Good evening, Commissioners. What you have in front of you, the redistricting committee voted on October 18th to recommend the attached commission district map for the future districts' boundaries. For the Charter 2.2, the board has to approve or disapprove the recommendation without amendment. If the board approves this recommendation, the legal boundaries will be advertised per Florida Statute 12402. And as we have the resolution, the legal boundaries and the committee recommendations are in the attachment. We're happy to answer any questions.
So I have Commissioner Loeb, Tobias. Has light on, have some cards, but Commissioners, I'm gonna let you go ahead and, and say a couple things, and I'm gonna call the cards up.
All right, Madam Chair, and I just ask a little bit of flexibility, I do have quite a bit I want to go over. This is a, a process that's gonna impact us over the next 10 years, so unfortunately, I think it's something we've got to spend some time on.
Okay, as, as we do this, guys, if you get your stuff ready, so we can just go ahead and, not that I'm saying that with you, but let's, let's get ready to go, so we don't do a lot of back and forth. I'm not saying that with you on that.
Yeah.
Just saying, let's just don't have a lot of back and forth, so we can just.
Okay, I've got some questions that I'd like to run by Abby, so if you just give us some flexibility to do that, we'll be great.
Absolutely, go ahead, yes, sir.
So Abby, you've been an attorney for over 20 years, have you not?
That is correct.
And you have substantial local government experience, correct?
That is correct.
And as I understand it, part of the reason we hired you was that you're board certified by the Florida Bar in city, county, and local government law, aren't you?
Yes, that is correct.
And now, as of, what, a week and a day ago, you're county attorney?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So since the, the redistricting committee first convened for the 2021 redistricting session, you've had primary responsibility for representing that committee on behalf of County Legal, am I right?
That is correct.
So I had indicated at a, an earlier redistricting committee meeting during public comment, that even if you strongly suspect that a particular proposal is likely to result in litigation, which would be an uphill battle for the county to defend, it would be incredibly unlikely that you would simply advise against that proposal, or to say that we're likely to lose. Is that because, as I had suggested, you don't want your own words essentially fed back to you, should we be sued?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
You don't want to hear, in essence, in a court proceeding in which the county is listed as a defendant, even the county's own attorney advised them against doing this, but the, the committee and the, and the commission disregarded the legal advice from their own attorney, and went ahead and selected the least defensible option. You don't want to hear that in a legal proceeding.
Correct.
So, well, it's, it's tough to say to a certainty, it's entirely possible that our own insurer, the county's insurer, may well refuse to cover our cost of defense, should we be sued on adopting the plan under consideration, am I right?
That is correct, it depends on what is filed.
And that's, we're not talking about a theoretical possibility, it's a real possibility.
Correct.
Are you aware of anyone who is or may have been supportive of the plan either under consideration tonight, or any other plan having offered to indemnify the county for its cost of defense?
I'm unaware of anyone doing that, no.
So if our insurer doesn't cover us, and no one steps up to pay our cost of defense, those costs would then be borne by taxpayers, wouldn't they be?
Correct, yes.
And I, I understand, and I appreciate your reluctance to verbalize an opinion against any particular proposal. Unfortunately, it's imperative that the commission understand the relative risk that we stand to assume, and I want to take a few minutes and discuss that risk with you. At the, the second to the last redistricting meeting, the redistricting committee had called, pretty efficiently, mind you, all but two of the more than dozen, perhaps 15 or so proposals that were then under consideration. At that meeting, I believe you were tasked with providing a legal analysis of the two proposals which survived that dauntless process of elimination, am I right?
Yes.
So I'm gonna refer to the two surviving plans, the ones that made it to the very last meeting, as the Wyler Plan and either the Pacriva or the Hybrid Plan, despite it having been referred to as the Fisher Plan by a lot of folks. The Wyler Plan, just for clarity's sake, is simply the most recent proposal that was put forth by Mr. Wyler. With respect to that plan, it remained unchanged for a number of meetings, so if anyone saw that plan in the past several meetings, that's the plan I'm talking about. The Pacriva Plan, or the Hybrid Plan, essentially adopts land transfers from District Four to District Two, which were contained within Mr. Wyler's plan, within two proposed change areas, not all of the D four to D two, but some of the D four to D two, leaving all of the other districts and all of the other portions of the proposal totally untouched, am I right?
That is correct, the Fisher Plan or the Hybrid Plan, yes.
So I'm, I'm assuming, based on the fact that I understand a memo went out, that you've had a sufficient opportunity to perform all appropriate due diligence in reviewing those two plans?
Yes.
And while it would be improper for staff to formulate policy for either the redistricting committee, or frankly, for this commission, as I alluded to a moment ago, when the commission needs to rely on your expertise regarding relative risk, unfortunately, I've got to get into that. So when the, the redistricting committee was first convened, do you recall staff having presented, I believe it may have been you, or Jim Leisenfeld, or perhaps another staff member, or multiple staff members, on various foundational issues that range from sunshine law to the metrics that the committee ought to use, and ought to strive to achieve?
Yes, we went over that.
Do you recall staff having articulated that a 3% spread, a 3% spread between the most and the least populated district was the goal? Do you recall that?
That is correct, that is considered the, the ideal, you're trying to work.
Okay, 3%. So do you recall a District Four redistricting appointee, former county commissioner Sue Schmidt, having suggested, and I believe it was during the September 14th redistricting committee meeting, which was well prior to the Hybrid Plan first having even been proposed, that the spread could be as high as 5%?
Yes, I do recall that.
Do you recall my having suggested, again, at a public comment session during redistricting, well prior to that Hybrid Plan first having, having been proposed, in so many words that remaining within 3% was ideal and the goal, as staff had said, remaining under 5% was essentially riskier, and surpassing the 10% essentially amounts to a non-starter.
That is correct, the, the courts have repeatedly looked at anything at 10% or higher as being a red flag, that that is a prima facie case for an equal protection violation. So 10% is, that's the, that's the critical mass, basically.
Commissioner Loeb, real quick, I know you're doing this, I think you're doing it for our behalf, I'm guessing.
In part.
But just so you know, I watched every single meeting.
And I appreciate that, Madam Chair.
So I'm guessing y'all did, too, so a lot of these things you're reviewing, I'm very aware of.
And I, I appreciate that.
And I even heard the conversation on there, Abby, Ms. Abby was asked if there was possibility, no matter what we brought with it being challenged, and she said absolutely yes.
And there's a question of likelihood, there are things that are theoretically possible, things that are legitimate risks.
With anything we do, correct. And Mr. Loeb, I gotta tell you, too, when you throw things out, you bring out some of the most creative, risky things that I think are wonderful, and we usually end up going with a few of them, too. So I just wanted to tell you that, as you're going down this path, you're not helping me anymore.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair, but again, part of it is, is for the folks up here who, who were soaking in perhaps something that did not occur to them previously.
Who else, guys?
Say again?
Because it's for us, right, because we're voting.
It's in part for us, but it's also in part for the folks who are gonna come up here and make public comments.
Okay, because we'll be voting, too, so.
Understood, Madam Chair.
And I've watched all those meetings as well.
You know, and I, I'm not trying to imply anyone up here who's not done their due diligence.
No, I'm just letting you know that a lot of the things, if you're reviewing things, we, we might already have kind of watched, so.
And I appreciate that, and again, this is one of those things, this impacts the county for a decade, so I would ask for some lenience and flexibility to ask the questions.
I just don't know, without, without any kind of imaging, or any kind of description, I mean, it's, you're hammering questions at Abby, I don't think, I mean, maybe the public that was intimately involved, or the, Mr. Wyler, Mr. Wyler, who you worked on, your idea for a map was, maybe he understands what's going on, but I, I would beg to say most people aren't quite understanding the path, because it's one question and one point after another. I get it, because I, I watched it, I know where you're coming from, I know which plan you want.
I appreciate that.
But I just don't, I think it's difficult for the rest of the people to follow, it's just my.
I appreciate that, and I'm trying to build a foundation without building an excessive foundation.
You're being a lawyer.
Yeah, and in essence, I can ask more questions to make it simpler, but it's gonna drag it on longer. If someone wants to ask something, either during public comment or after that, I'm happy to address that, but I, I think there's certain things that I really feel that we ought to go over.
Maybe if you would, would state what you think it is, and, and what your conclusions are, it might help a little bit.
Well, I, I think part of it is, we've, we have, as a commission, selected a county attorney. Prior to our having selected her, she was deemed absolutely capable by County Legal to go and handle redistricting. I think it's more important, rather than me stating it, to get our attorney's opinion, so that we have a basis to move forward, understanding what our attorney's opinion is.
I don't think she's gonna tell you, she wouldn't be able to defend either one.
Well, if you just bear with me, I think I could have gotten through respectfully a number of my comments at this point now, had we not had some of this back and forth, which I'm happy to have, I just.
I, I just think we might be getting a little bit of a rabbit trail, and I think this is gonna be a very long discussion anyway, so I just want to, I want to tell you that, because it's us you have to convince.
I promise, I have not, to my knowledge, ever tried to rush anyone up here when I was chair, when I was not chair. I don't intend ever to rush anyone up here, especially when we're dealing with a meat and potatoes issue that's going to impact the county for a decade. So, I apologize if this is a little bit longer than folks would like.
I'm just trying to figure out, are you trying to figure out legality of it? Because that seems to be the question. So, if you'd help me with that.
Let me, if you'd just allow me a little bit of flexibility again, I think we can get through this without too much pain.
I would like to ask a question. Are you under the impression that we are not familiar with the conversations that you had with Abby during these?
No, I'm not under that impression at all.
Because from what I've heard so far, sorry, I'll get closer to the mic. So, what I've heard so far is that you're basically grilling her on things that she said and was said during the proceedings, and.
I don't agree with that characterization.
Okay, well, that's what I've been hearing, and I've already heard her answers to your questions. So, I just, if you want to make it shorter, I think you can, because as I've said and my fellow commissioners have already said, we've pretty much heard this.
Yes, but as Commissioner Zonka mentioned, some of the folks out there may not understand.
But they're not voting.
But I think they have a right to have public input and to articulate what their concerns and thoughts are before we vote.
Well, I don't disagree with that, but I think if anybody had a real desire, it doesn't even have to be a burning desire, a real desire to know, excuse me, what has transpired since July at all these meetings, they would have attended some of them, one or two or four or five.
I don't disagree.
So, if they haven't attended any of those, I would say their interest level is probably pretty low. So, I don't know, I'm just trying to speed things up, and all we're doing here is spending more time.
And again, I think, I think we're kind of getting to.
I've given you my thoughts, so if you want to continue, have at it.
Please.
But I'm telling you that from my perspective, we've already heard it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, sir, you may.
Abby, as a matter of law, and I'm just going to get direct here, as it pertains to the defensibility of the proposals, do you disagree with my statements in regard to less than 3% being an ideal or, as staff put it, the goal?
I do not disagree with that.
Though you've indicated that anything exceeding 10% would be a red flag, best practice would be to.
Chairwoman, hold on, Jim needs to jump in. I'm sorry.
And I'm trying to look, we, staff, we didn't, there was no goal set that, they're talking about variance, but we didn't set a 3% goal.
I can give you the specific minutes in the site if you'd like. Madam Chair, would you like me to look that up? I have them.
No, sir, I just, let's just move forward.
And I believe Abby's already mentioned that during the foundational discussion that staff had identified 3% as one of the target metrics.
Okay, I tell you what, let's take a little five-minute break here and let's come back in just a minute.
Between the district populations, you can't get an per se equal or zero percent percentage. So the reasons that they do acknowledge as appropriate is if you're underpopulating a particular area due to future population growth, if you know, you think you're going to have an area that actually is going to exceed growth in the next 10 years, you can actually underpopulate that particular district. The other reasons for that is to preserve the integrity of the cities as well as providing for compact districts of contiguous territory. So you're trying to preserve the district's contiguous nature. So the courts have recognized that there, there can be a deviation, 10% being the red flag, that if you hit 10% or go over at that point in time, you have that prima facie case of a violation of the equal protection.
Okay. So while there are certainly countless court cases and laws, given your breadth of experience and your research, your obvious research into the legal issues that pertain to redistricting, are you presently aware of any statute, any case law, or any other binding precedent, whatever that might be, that would permit or sanction the adoption of a higher than ideal spread primarily or solely on account of wishing to maintain the status quo to the greatest degree possible? Not on account of any of those reasons you mentioned, whether it's preserving the integrity of the city, ensuring contiguous districts, future growth? Are you aware of any law, statute, or other binding precedent that would permit or sanction adopting a higher deviation solely to maintain the status quo?
I'm unaware of any, no.
So you recall that the hybrid plan came into existence as a result of meshing the Wyler Plan, or at least two of the proposed change areas of the Wyler Plan, with what was then the Fisher Plan of leaving all districts alone and not in essence, but literally doing nothing and not redistricting? Am I right?
Could you just restate that? I'm sorry.
So I just want to get into how the hybrid plan came into existence, because I think it makes a huge difference. Is your understanding as mine is that it came into existence, at least based upon the minutes leading up to the point at which it was introduced, as a result of meshing the Wyler Plan along with what was then the Fisher Plan, being essentially do nothing, leave all the districts as they are, don't change the boundaries whatsoever?
That is correct. That was the discussion.
So you may recall as well that the committee was uncomfortable with the Fisher Plan at that time, being one again of doing nothing that resulted in a greater than 10% spread or deviation, leaving those districts as is. You recall that?
Yes. We were looking at a very high deviation at that point if we did nothing.
So given the chronology and given that, you would agree, I imagine, that it appears certainly, at least facially, pretty plain that the hybrid plan originated as a result of a desire to maintain as much of the status quo as possible while reducing that spread below 10%? Wouldn't you?
So, I mean, without really knowing exactly what...
Seculations, sir.
I mean, at that point, I can't put myself in the position of the committee members per se, but I mean, at that point in time...
Sustained.
They were trying to, obviously, we had the red flag of 10%, so at that point, we were getting it below.
Okay. So that's fair. I think people can make their own conclusions with respect to that. But do you also recall, Abby, that it was the first, the first and only time that the now Fisher Plan, where there was any attempt to argue a legitimate lawful basis for the nearly 9% deviation in what's now being referred to as the Fisher Plan, that I've been calling it Prokrieva Hybrid Plan? Do you recall that the only time that that's ever taken place was after it was introduced at the final redistricting meeting? As far as addressing any of those three or four items that you mentioned were lawful bases for exceeding a 3% spread?
It was at the final, at the final meeting, and that was after I did a brief presentation to the committee as to the 10% and the case law and the statute and the constitutional requirements that were supposed to follow as far as redistricting in general.
I appreciate that. That's my, that's my understanding as well. And I, the next couple of items, I don't mean to speak ill of anyone that was on redistricting. Frankly, folks willing to serve and dedicate their time deserve appreciation for that. So please don't take it as a slide. I see a couple of redistricting, more than a couple of redistricting appointees in the audience, and I really do respect all the work that you all put in. But I think it's important to kind of see the chronology of where things were and where it went, and then folks can make whatever conclusions they wish based upon that information. So during the October 4th redistricting committee meeting, in discussing the hybrid plan and the Wyler Plan, do you recall former state rep Jason Steele, who I believe was a D5 appointee, having stated, and I'm going to quote in pertinent part, "But the two maps that we have now are a toss-up. They are almost identical except for one big thing, and that's the deviation on Todd's is 8.4, actually 8.8. The deviation on John's is 2.4, significantly lower on John's. So why would we go with an 8.4, again, an actually 8.8 deviation when we can go for a 2.4 deviation? It's six of one and half a dozen of another. So I think we could easily come to a decision tonight, and either one of these proposals would be very good with the county commission. And unfortunately, as much as I would like to go along with Robin's idea, I think it's probably smarter for us to do deviation that's lower and puts us in a better protective position." Do you recall that?
It sounds familiar, yes.
Now, I want to talk about a different meeting. During the September 27th redistricting committee meeting, do you recall our excellent, who's sitting in the back, sharply dressed as always, our former House Speaker Steve Crisafoli, I believe also a D5 appointee, having pulled his own proposal in favor of or in deference to one of Mr. Prokrieva's proposal and also the Wyler proposal, based on them being so substantially similar to his own?
Yes. Eventually, we ended up with the two plans that we had before the committee.
And going back to that October 4th redistricting committee meeting, do you recall Mr. Prokrieva, who I believe was Mr. Smith's appointee, having pulled his own proposal in favor of Mr. Wyler's proposal?
Yes. We ended up with the two plans for review.
At that meeting, again, the October 4th meeting, in discussing the two plans, I believe that Mr. Prokrieva's words, and I'm going to quote them in pertinent part, were as follows: "There were two, they were two, they were very similar, and they also incorporated a lot of other committee members and comments from our meeting, second to last. I did not need to review my plan because it mirrored Mr. Wyler's, because we took it into consideration. Committee feedback during that discussion in the meeting before, that meeting before last chairman, he said something similar as to my plan. I believe that Mr. Wyler explained that he presented as taking into account the feedback on many of the committee members." So essentially, again, pulling his plan in favor of Mr. Wyler's.
Yes.
So for the next question, I'm not asking that you opine as to whether we might lose a lawsuit or whether we will lose a lawsuit. I just want to talk about relative risk, again, between those two plans that the committee itself arrived at for the final consideration. It's, again, I don't think it needs to be the Wyler Plan if it's not the plan under consideration, but I'm just deferring to the committee's selection with respect to that. So, under the case law with which you're familiar, based exclusively when we talk about or look at spread metrics, so the deviation between the most populated and the least populated districts, from a standpoint of risk tolerance, would the county assume an objectively greater risk of a potentially meritorious lawsuit were it to adopt the hybrid plan over the Wyler Plan?
So, the recommendation is to keep the percentage as low as possible. I mean, try to get within that 3%. So at that point in time, you know, and I think I explained this to the committee, we can be sued for any of our plans. I mean, obviously, I can't stop someone from suing us. I defend anything that we have.
I appreciate that.
But at that point, obviously, a lower percentage, you know, that, when you start to tick up to a higher percentage at that point in time, you know, it could raise, you know, more concern.
I apologize. I might be getting a little old here. I'm a little slow when it comes to this. I just want to ask, because I appreciate that, I truly do, and I think that's, that's good information to qualify the answer with.
I know.
But when it, when it comes to it, from a standpoint of risk tolerance, again, the question was, would the county assume an objectively greater risk of a potentially meritorious lawsuit were it to adopt the hybrid plan over the Wyler Plan?
So looking at the Wyler Plan having a 2.18%, obviously, going into court with that percentage, is it an easier percentage to defend?
I appreciate that. I want to shift gears. There were some other questions I was going to ask, but I think we've been over enough with respect to them. I want to talk about our county charter, because I think that's absolutely critical moving forward. What does the county charter mandate when it comes to redistricting amongst the five districts and the balance that we have to strive to achieve?
Okay. So specifically, that is going to be in Section 2.2, which provides that the Board of County Commissioners shall cause the county to be divided into county commission districts of contiguous territory as nearly equal in population as practicable.
All right. That's a big word. I want to talk about practicability. How would you define the word practicable? Can you give us at least a working definition?
As much as possible. So when we, we did have some training that we had provided by the Florida Association of Counties, and that was by an expert who basically came in and explained that you're trying to get this percentage as low as possible. Once again, going back to the court cases, the courts recognize that it's not going to be a perfect, you're not going to just split all five districts evenly. There are reasons why you would underpopulate or have a different, different variation. So there are some, there is recognition that there could be different percentages.
Okay. And again, as far as the plan that's now under consideration, there wasn't even an attempt to argue that any of those applied until after it was introduced at the final meeting. Am I correct?
It was at the final meeting that I, yes, at that point in time, after we had our discussion, I had done my, my little final thoughts to the committee as to what we're trying to do as far as the redistricting committee was concerned.
So I want to ask a question, and it really, if it's not this simple, I apologize. But while there are certainly differences in the defensibility between Mr. Wyler's plan and the hybrid plan that we have as an option this evening, would you not agree that the redistricting committee absolutely could have voted for either plan at the final meeting, either Mr. Wyler's proposal or the hybrid proposal that we have before us now?
Yes. I had done a memo to the committee specifically evaluating both plans before that final meeting and saying, at that point in time, they were, you know, acceptable because they were below the 10%. There was an attempt to rebalance the population in the districts. They're obviously very different, but they were...
Sure. So in that sense, knowing that they could have gone for either, since we're talking about practicability being something that can be accomplished, given that the, the redistricting committee could have gone with either, in that sense, they were both practicable. Am I right?
Yes.
So going back to the charter language, and I, I have it jotted down here, I apologize if I'm wrong, please correct me, mandating, and I'm going to quote in pertinent part, that we divide into districts as nearly equal in population as practicable, if we arguably fail to do that, could that be the basis on which a potential, a potential plaintiff sues the county?
There are a lot of factors there. So yes, I mean, it's possible, but obviously, the courts look at why there may be districts that are underpopulated or have, you know, the variance. They will look at that.
So just to cut to the meat of it, as it pertains to the charter language that I just quoted in pertinent part, is the hybrid plan that we have this evening or the Wyler plan objectively more defensible?
So looking at the, if we were looking solely at the deviation, obviously, you have a lower deviation in one plan. It's not the plan before the board tonight, but it was the plan, one of the plans that was before the committee at the last meeting. That was a lower deviation, the Wyler Plan.
So as, as to the charter language, I just want to make sure, and I want to give you every opportunity, I'm not going to cut you off, and if you need to qualify, qualify it. Based on what I've seen and based on what you told me about the charter language, would I be correct in assuming that the Wyler Plan is objectively more defensible as it pertains to the charter language?
Oh, as to the charter language, so yes. I mean, if you're looking at that, the Wyler Plan that was presented to the committee at that last meeting, it did actually impact all five districts. So you are, you are shifting population. Once again, going back to those court cases, the court does recognize that sometimes you will not perhaps underpopulate a particular district for a reason, if you have a expectation of a high population growth. So I mean, there are reasons for doing that, but I mean, clearly, one plan was impacting five districts, the other one had a higher deviation, impacted only two. But once again, there are reasons for making those changes.
Commissioner Loeb, I feel like you're kind of repeating yourself a bit. Are you, are you about there? But you're asking the same questions four different ways.
I am, ma'am, but I, I'm going to move on to a different item. I'm not going to talk about the charter at this point, so...
Okay, about how much longer with you, because I want to get them into, I know you're going to come back at the end again.
I will bite my lip as much as I can, and I promise you, I will keep this as short as I possibly can.
Okay.
But I think it's absolutely critical that we spend the time this evening.
Well, the thing of it is, we're going to be voting up here.
I understand, ma'am.
And there are things that we know. I'm guessing most of them are educated, they are there. As far as the public, you know, I am not sure this is a good time to educate them on the whole procedure. So you can use your discretion right now, but I'm hearing the same thing that you're asking, Abby, four different ways. She's giving the same answers. So you'll have to help me with that, sir. I'm just trying to get the meeting to move along.
I appreciate that. I don't, I don't think in the three years that I've been here, I've asked for any level of leniency when it comes to asking questions of this sort of...
I'm just trying to help get it moving along a little bit.
And I appreciate that. I would, I would just ask you to continue to be generous and allow me to be...
You have about 10 more minutes?
That's fine.
Okay.
I have a question.
That's fine. Before we do that, I think we can wrap it up within 10.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
We're spending all this time. What is the goal here? I'm, I'm just hearing things that I already know, and I'm, and I watch these things from the meetings. And a lot of these questions you ask during the meetings, and Abby has answered them. So where, where do you want, where do you want to get us?
I'd like to get everyone in the room who desires to be on the same page, on the same page with respect to the legal requirements that we're obligated to operate within. Now, you and I may or may not be on the same page, we may well be. I don't know that everyone who's taken time out of their day and out of their evening in the middle of a work week to be here is necessarily as apprised as the folks up here who are paid a full-time salary to do this job.
I don't think that's supposed to do that.
So again, if...
I'm curious, and I'm really impressed that you're concerned about all these folks and how much they know and they don't know. I'd almost like to ask a show of hands, how many people want to know more...
I don't think we're entitled to poll the audience at any event.
I know, we're not. That's what I said. I'm almost inclined to do that, because I don't, I don't share your desire to inform these folks about things that they don't really care about. That's, that's my point.
I apologize if transparency is distasteful sometimes, but I think it's admirable of all.
That's not, transparency is already, we've already done all this.
Commissioner Loeb, I'm going to give you 10 more minutes.
I appreciate that. If I can actually have the 10, though.
Okay. 10 minutes, you're on.
Article 8, Section 1, each, each of the commissioners, all five of us up here, have taken an oath to uphold not only the federal constitution, but also the constitution of the state of the, of the state of Florida, am I right?
Yes.
Article 8, Section 1, subsection little E of our state's constitution, in pertinent part reads, and I'm quoting, "After each census, the Board of County Commissioners shall," not "may," "shall," "divide the county into districts of contiguous territory as nearly equal in population as practicable." That language is essentially identical to the requirements of our county charter, is it not?
That is correct.
Is that language permissive or optional, or are we obligated to follow it?
It is the mandate, and that's what I told the committee. This is, this is our mandate to, to do this population shift. They recognize that after the census that you've had shift in population, and now we're supposed to make this changes.
So, we've touched on it already. As to the, the legal memo that you mentioned, which was sent to redistricting appointees prior to their final meeting, after the second to last, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
In that memo, in which you clearly suggest that the Wyler Plan is the more defensible of the two, you made a statement which appears to conflict with a lot of other things contained in that memo. And I'm going to quote you here. You stated, "Both proposals are acceptable," and I want to discuss that very briefly. Did you state this because both are below a 10% variance threshold and both, at least to a degree, attempt to balance population amongst the various districts, granted only one of them, one of them only does so between two of the five districts, a minority of them?
That is correct. I mean, they both do shift population in the districts and, and are below that 10% red flag.
So to recap, would it not be easier to defend a plan which has less than one quarter of the deviation and balances the population amongst all five districts instead of merely two of the five?
And so qualifying that a little bit, depending on the challenge, obviously, if I can go into court and I can show the, you know, the court we are really low deviation, that would be, that'd be a great place to be. I mean, that was the recommendation, but obviously, as long as you're under that 10%, you're not having that red flag.
Do you believe that the Wyler Plan clearly meets the legal requirements of our county's charter, the Florida constitution, and any other applicable law of which you're aware?
Yes. I would say that.
I'm not going to be mean and ask you the question about the other plan. If someone else wants to, they're welcome to do that. Focusing solely upon the metrics that the committee must consider, is it not true that one plan clearly fits within those metrics? Again, we quoted you earlier from, I think it was an August 27th meeting, in addressing that the goal is to stay within 3% while another essentially pushes the boundaries to a far greater degree?
Right. The recommended variance was 3%, so we have one plan that was clearly a little bit under, but then we have the one that's 8.78%. But once again, as I mentioned in that memo, they're both acceptable because they do, they do make that, they keep under that 10%.
But that, that shouldn't be taken to mean, then, that one proposal is in a far safer idea than the other from a liability standpoint, should it?
It depends on the challenge, but I mean, at, at that point, I mean, you have very different plans. So obviously, you're only going to adopt one plan, and that's going to be the one that's going to be, if there is a challenge that we're going to have to address, what are the issues the court may see.
So in essence, to use the term acceptable in a similar fashion, it might be acceptable for someone who weighs 150 pounds to have four beers on an empty stomach and drive?
It may. It depends on the person.
So it's simply, insofar as your memo is concerned, the term acceptable, then, am I right to say that it essentially means a possible choice?
They were both, they were both choices before the committee, and neither hit that 10% that would make me concerned at that point. I mean, we saw the attempts by both plans to shift population and try to balance population. One addressed all five, another addressed only two. But once again, going back to the court cases, the court will look at whether there were some articulable reasons why we underpopulated one district versus another.
I appreciate it, Abby. And I'll just direct the rest of the, the comments to the commission here. I've talked about the oath that we all swore to uphold. It means a lot to me as someone who's licensed to practice law. I'm not saying it doesn't mean the same to you, but it means a lot to me. I'm not suggesting that it's realistic to presume that the governor would remove us if we support a plan that's not in keeping with the constitution, but we absolutely have an ethical and a legal obligation to follow our county charter, to follow our state's constitution, irrespective of whether it's popular or convenient. This board is charged with redistricting amongst the five districts as nearly equal in population as practicable, not two of the five. We don't have to guess what that means. The history of the redistricting committee itself makes it real simple. We only need to look at their second to last meeting to know that there was at least one other plan that was absolutely lawful and which had less than one quarter of the deviation or spread from the plan that we're looking at this evening. Yes, we can be removed for malfeasance or misfeasance. In short, malfeasance being intentional conduct that's wrong or unlawful, misfeasance being a lower standard that may not have that intent. Again, I'm not saying the governor's going to remove us. I'm not saying there's any likelihood of that, but bluntly, to violate our oath of office, which this would do if we support this, knowing what the options are and knowing what our county charter requires, it's unbelievable to me. It's absolutely unbelievable. This is something where, yes, I have a law degree, I practiced law for double-digit years, but you don't need one if you talk to the county attorney. This is something that's fairly simple. Conservatives oftentimes, Republicans slam judges for even the perception, right or wrong, that they're legislating from the bench or being activists. We have no right to disregard our county charter, no right to disregard our state constitution, because either are inconvenient. Maybe I care more again because I'm an attorney, but I feel extremely strongly about this. For those who question my motives out there, how does my district stand to gain or lose regardless of which plan you go with? In fact, frankly, the Wyler Plan is less convenient for me, and I'll tell you why, because South Patrick Shores isn't a municipality. All their problems become my problems. I'd essentially be mayor of South Patrick Shores, having to take care of everything from garbage collection to speed humps. That's a hassle. It adds to my workload. But the point is, there's a lawful option and there's an unlawful option. I'm going to save the remainder. I said I'd keep it within 10 minutes. I think I've done that, but I think this is a, a no-brainer solution, even if it's not a pleasant solution here.
Tell us how you really feel.
You don't want to give me that leeway.
That's what I'm waiting for.
Commissioner Tobias, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to be clear, while I will not be voting in the affirmative of this plan, I certainly, the issues I have are not solved by the Wyler Plan. I'd like to begin by thanking the dedicated staff, namely Jim and Abby, that put up with a diverse group of individuals, some that had a great deal, great deal of ideas, others that had less so, some that had done this before, others that hadn't. So I greatly appreciate. I don't want to say leadership, because they were there to help facilitate this more than lead it. In all honesty, like I said, I was not excited about the outcome, but the process was done above board and one that I think we all certainly can be proud of. So, and I want to lay this out here, because I would throw this in my face if I was anyone else up, up here. I had three appointees, and I spoke with them at length before I appointed them, and yet, two of them voted for this plan.
I thought just one.
No.
You had one.
I was. No.
Which ones did you have? I'm sorry.
So I'm, I'm very happy with the one individual who will go nameless, who, who was aligned with the issues that I mentioned on March 5th. And it was clear to the board, as well as my own appointees, that it was, we had a certain moral and legal obligation when it came to this process, and I would not vote for a proposal that did not ensure a minority candidate had an equitable shot at winning an election to this board. For those of you that don't believe that racism is a problem in our county, one only needs to look at the action of one of our own employees over Halloween who dressed in what is clearly a racist manner. Those in the minority communities understand why this is a problem, and I believe that they should have a realistic shot at sitting on this board, so issues like that can be addressed more effectively. It is not that our current management does not take care of these issues. Seriously, as a group of white elected policymakers do not necessarily understand the issues facing minority communities. And can we put that slide back up, please, just for a second? While we do not have the ability to approve a plan that hasn't been presented to us, my motion for cease sending this back. And the Fisher Plan was the one that was presented to us. I played around with staff and came up with the Tobias Plan, so there's no confusion. I would have been very happy if any of my appointees would have presented this plan, but unfortunately, they didn't. And I'll just go over the requirements or, or the plan differences here and the reasons. The deviation that Commissioner was, Loeb was speaking of, the Fisher Plan, the one presented to us, the, the plan that I had is, is, is lower, not greatly lower, but certainly lower. Not only that, the mean deviation. I've broken it down by the target districts down there. You see that my plan certainly, each and every one, is, is lower. Now, this is where the charter kicks in, is breaking up municipalities. The plan you have in front of you breaks up Cocoa, Melbourne, Palm Bay, Rockledge, and West Melbourne. The plan that I dealt with staff only has one, that being Melbourne. Obviously, Melbourne has some unique features of where it's got beach as well as mainland, and, and there was no way to get around that. Also, the plan that I had presents a better shot minority population, one that is seven or eight points higher than even the highest one that, that the Fisher Plan has. I, again, appreciate all the work, but my goal, certainly coming out of here, and, and I think most people know this, certainly everyone up at the board does, I'm not, I don't have the opportunity, even if I had wanted to, to run for it. So this will have no impact on my electoral future, but I honestly believe that, that we have an obligation to help a community that has been overlooked time in and time out. Again, as you walk out of this chamber, or if you are in here, please take a look at the, the faces that line the walls here of, of past commissioners. You will notice that they are overwhelmingly, look like us. And to provide an opportunity to folks to growing populations is something that, that we can do up here today. My motion would reject the recommendation of the redistricting committee with the suggestion they send us a recommendation that does at least as well as a proposed plan that was able to keep every municipality together, with the exception of Melbourne, and include a district in which the minority population would exceed 40, 41%. It's possible. It's up there. I'm not saying that there can be done better. I would be, I would certainly support one that met those guidelines and went above that. But like I said, I mentioned this at the beginning of the year, that I couldn't support But like I said, I mentioned this at the beginning of the year, that I couldn't support a plan that did not provide that opportunity. This plan, I don't know whether it's legally defensible or not. I think the larger issue comes to who's going to sue. I don't know who's going to sue us, and clearly you've laid out some grounds, Commissioner Lober, for that to be said and put, unfortunately, our county attorney in a really tough spot. And I appreciate the way that she, it's your right to ask those questions, but I appreciate the way that she answered those. I think that it's very clear, and I think even, hopefully you would agree with us, that this board made a unanimous and correct decision when we selected her as county attorney.
Yes.
So, that being said, that's my motion. But to be clear, I'll go back in conclusion. Thanks so much for the hard work of staff and the group, the volunteers that did this. And though I'm not in favor of the current plan, I'm not necessarily, no, I'm 100% not in favor of the Wyler Plan, because it doesn't perceive a district that is a minority-majority, or at least an access district.
Madam Chair, this point of information.
If it's two seconds.
It's two seconds. I heard that was the motion, but I apologize. Was the motion to reject it? Because I just want clarity on what the motion was.
Madam Chair. Yeah. Can I read it again? Reject the recommendation of the redistricting committee with the suggestion they send us a recommendation that does at least as good as a proposed plan, that, my proposed plan, that was able to keep every municipality together, with the exception of Melbourne, and include a district in which the minority population would exceed 41%. So it's not approve my plan, it's approve a plan that's better, or at least as good or potentially better than the plan that I laid out.
Okay. Commissioner Zanka, do you want to say anything before we start, ma'am?
Well, I would say we probably have a lot of cards, and I'd like to hear from the card speakers first, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Smith?
I have an opinion. I'll talk later.
Did you want to say anything?
No, I'll wait to hear it. Put it out the sec.
I'm going to call cards. Before I do, Commissioner Tabaya, I have to say, you said none of them on the walls look like us. I think me and Robin Fisher look a lot alike. All right. I will call Mr. Rick Mariani.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rick Mariani, from South Patrick Shores. As Vice President of, and in the name of the Board of South Patrick Residents Association, I wish to reaffirm our support and appreciation for the efforts and the careful evaluation of at least 15 plans by the Bervard County Redistricting Commission that has resulted in the plan you will vote on today. I wasn't planning to speak about this, but this is directed to Commissioner Lober. We of South Patrick Shores are not adjacent to D-2. We don't vote in D-2. Our children don't go to school in D-2, and we do not wish to be a hassle or a nuisance to Commissioner Lober. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lawrence Tidobam?
Close.
Okay.
My name is Lawrence Tidobam, and I am a board member of Tortoise Island Homo Association. We are a 35-plus-year-old community comprising of 343 residences on the Barry Island, just south of Patrick Space Force Base, got the name right, and Pioneer Corrus Way. First, I'd like to thank the members of the redistricting committee for all their hard work in dealing some very challenging issues that they have here, in both providing a plan for the upcoming 10 years, taking us from where we are now with our future growth to where we will be down the road. We believe that the Fisher Plan, or whoever the name has evolved to be at this point in time, is a superior plan that leaves Tortoise Island specifically as a singular community. Otherwise, the competing plan at the last meeting would have divided us between about 50 homes in Satellite Beach and another 200 homes plus in unincorporated Bervard County, and that would be a major hardship to us, having that occur because of shared community services, et cetera, et cetera. We also are a beachside community that we share common interests with for South Patrick Residents Association, you just heard from, as well as the city of Satellite Beach. Over 50 of our residents and the board of Tortoise Island have directly communicated with each commissioner here today via email, showing our support for the Fisher Plan. We urge the county commission to approve the redistricting plan this evening, and want to thank the Commissioners for all their hard work and your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Josiah Gattle?
Good evening, County Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a member of the redistricting committee that considered the over 15 maps. I thought it was important for a member that voted in the minority to speak to you today, because there are a number of concerns that I have, that I believe going forward could cause us significant issues. The first of which is the most obvious, and one brought up by Commissioner Lober, on the variance issue. The variance issue is that we are within 1% basically of that red flag area. This means that we could come back and have to do this whole process, reconvene the 15 members, within five years. If we just take the estimates that Mr. Pecriva and the Vera Company have laid out, or some of the empty lots that are just sitting in Palm Bay that are ready to be built, we will be at the point where we will have to redistrict and hit a 25% variance, potentially, within five years. And we'll be right back here, right back, having to make some hard decisions. I appreciate that there are hard decisions that we have to make. We have to move municipalities. The Wyler Plan, which was one of the final two, moved about 40,000 people around the county, and it's not pleasant. I was one of those people that would end up on just one side of that line, where I would go to District One, where I would be far away from the majority of the population of District One. But it was the right decision to make, to focus on what we really are trying to achieve, which is one person, one vote. A person's vote in District One should not be worth 9% more or 9% less than what another district or commissioner would be. The county commission is to represent equally each of the districts and each of the concerns. Part of that is the MSTU process. In the process of our discussions, MSTUs came up, and one of the things that came up and was brought up by some of the proponents of the hybrid plan was the vast population that is unincorporated, over 490 square miles in District One. One of the reasons why we need to redistrict is to bring the populations up to even, so that our road MSTUs, our stormwater MSTUs, have equivalent or equal amounts, as close as possible, so that we can address the needs of those citizens in each of the districts, so that those MSTUs can properly be funneled. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate your consideration of both plans. I don't necessarily advocate for any one of the remaining plans. I set aside all of my three plans that I had proposed, including one that created an island district, that was able to maintain a more equal population distribution than this one in front of you today. Thank you very much for your time, and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ms. Sandra Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I attended most of these meetings, and understand that the purpose of redistricting is to have equal representation for voting purposes. That's why we have redistricting. With 8.78%, I don't feel that does that. I took some pictures of slides, I want to just read this one, from, I think this was the October 4th meeting. As equal as possible, oh, sorry, as equal in population as possible or practical. Absolute population equality is impossible. Minimize the deviation from the mean. Less than 3% over/under ideal is good. Population equals registered voters. Two districts with population differences over 10% point raises red flag automatically. The point that we're trying to do here, as it says, is as possible or practical, and definitely it is possible and it is practical that you could get a much closer variance than 8.78%. It's not to a certain plan, it's just that this plan does not meet that criteria, and I believe it should go back to the board. I also just want to make a quick mention here, is while Tortoise Island is an HOA, and they vote and they pay into it, SPRO is like a garden club. It's optional to join. So they did not take a vote. They represent only their paid-up members, which I would suggest are dwindling in recent years, with one newsletter out this year. So Tortoise Island has a very good, you know, and is acceptable to put forth an opinion. As far as SPRO, they don't represent our community. Thank you.
Mr. Phil Bonardo?
I'm Phil Bonardo, President of the North Merritt Island Homeowners Association, and short and sweet, I really just wanted to thank the redistricting committee for listening to North Merritt Island's concerns and acting on them. Early on, there was a proposal to separate us, North Merritt Island, from the rest of Merritt Island, move us to District One.
You would have liked it. Go ahead.
No hard feelings, but we did have some serious concerns. Many other residents of North Merritt Island had some serious concerns. We attended committee meetings, we spoke about it, they listened, they acted on it, as obviously were not in the plan, but I just wanted to thank them for listening to us and taking that into account. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you, sir.
Mr. Steve Chrisafoli?
I have a question.
Oh. Commissioner Zanka has a question.
Sorry.
And thank you for your job chairing. I think you just did an excellent job, sir.
I watched every one of those redistricting meetings, and I have to say.
I'm sorry to hear that.
No. Some of them are quite long.
Enjoyable.
And I think you did a great job, especially with some of the, when it got a little testy, you managed to keep everybody at bay, and I think everybody appreciated your leadership. And I don't, and please forgive me for putting you on the spot. Have you ever sat on a redistricting committee before for the county?
Not for the county, no.
You've done it for the state, correct?
I have.
And maybe you don't want to answer this question, and I'm fine if you say no, but do you think it's appropriate for a county commissioner to come and speak about, in favor or not in favor of a plan? And I, again, I apologize.
Let me just say this. It's a much different process at the state level, and I think Commissioner Tabaya would attest to this, than it is at the county level. You know, at the state level, you know, everything is public record, everything is drawn into the public, which is what it's supposed to be about, just like this process was. But there's a difference in the process from which elected members would speak to redistricting at the state level versus at the local level. I mean, let's be honest, across the state, in 67 counties, I believe, what, 63 or 64 counties actually draw their own maps from the commission level? So, you know, so it's just a totally different process. So at the county level, it's acceptable for Commissioners to engage in the process.
Okay. Because I figured, at least from my perspective, we had appointees to that board, so I figured, you know, you were my appointee. I figured you were my representation. We talked before, you know, you asked what my goals were, and obviously my goals were to keep things as disruptive as possible. And I'm glad that ultimately that's the plan we have. But, and again, I'm so sorry for putting you on the spot. I just, I just know me, the very first time that I saw one of our Commissioners come to the meeting, I felt uncomfortable, because I think there's an intimidation factor there. I think it makes people uncomfortable, because ultimately, we're the board that votes. So maybe it's just a question of what's appropriate. I know that you would not have seen me at that meeting, so, again, I apologize. I really did not mean to put you on the spot. I just, I'd asked you that when we spoke afterwards, and you had said that you hadn't served, but I just wanted that to be clear, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, so.
No problem.
I think that's probably all I have for Mr. Chrisafoli. I know, again, I mean, you only have to watch those meetings to see how many different types of maps you went through, and I appreciate your time and your enormous amount of patience with the process.
It's an honor to do it.
Commissioner Tabaya, did you want to ask?
Yes, Madam Chair. And Speaker, I don't mind putting you on the spot, so I will. So the Charter Commission is changing, and you brought it up, not me, that 60, some of the 67 counties draw themselves. So what, as, you know, former Speaker of the House, what's your suggestion? Do you like the process that you just went through, or do you think it would be, would you, you don't sit on the Charter.
No.
Do you want to?
He wouldn't do it.
Time served.
What's your suggestion there?
You know, it's an interesting, it's an interesting question, because when you, you know, if you compare it to the state level, the legislature does redraw their own seats. You know, so to say that there's a right way or a wrong way, you know, it's, there is, I don't think there's the right answer to that. I think the committee works. I think it serves its purpose. You know, is it different than the rest of the state? Yeah. I mean, for the most part. But listen, I think from the understanding of the committee members and the knowledge that they have about this county, y'all did a great job in selecting, you know, a group of people that understand the dynamics of this county, the future growth opportunities, you know, the differences of what's going to look like today versus what it looks like in 10 years. You know, so I think, I think the process works. But obviously, when you're redistricting with five people versus 160 people in the legislature, it's a far different conversation, because there's far more input, you know, from a multitude of angles in Tallahassee than there is if five Commissioners or seven Commissioners, you know, in the state of Florida are drawing, you know, their own seat. So, you know, and again, that was the difference between this local level and the state level, was the engagement, you know, from the standpoint of elected members. I mean, like in Tallahassee, you just don't talk about yourself. You know, you don't do it, you stay, in fact, you're guaranteed to be deposed if, you know, if you start talking about your interest in what you do. But obviously, in the, at the county level, that happens in every county, you know, across the state, two totally different processes, you know, and I don't think the two can even be compared, you know.
Madam Chair, I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Chrisafoli.
Speaker, just a couple of things. One on a topic that Commissioner Zanka spoke about, and then separately, a question I was going to ask you anyway. Commissioner Tabaya and I were there. I don't mind putting names out there. Did either of us do anything to try to intimidate anyone that you saw, or were either of us aggressive or intimidating?
You spoke to your issues, yes.
Are you aware, because I'm not, and I guess, I mean, if Abby's aware, I'll invite her to answer too, of whether there's any prohibition on any of the five of us, or all of the five of us, reaching out individually to all 15 of the redistricting appointees?
I don't know that there is, no.
Yeah, I, personally, I'd rather have Commissioners having the conversations in the open to the degree possible at those meetings, instead of reaching out in the dark, making the calls. Just out of curiosity, if you don't want to answer, don't. Truly, it's not, I'm not going to twist your arm on this. Did you have Commissioners reach out to you regarding redistricting outside of the redistricting meetings?
Outside of the redistricting, yes.
Again, nothing wrong with it. I'd rather know what they're saying, so be that as it may. So now to the question I was going to ask you anyway. And again, this is one, if you don't want to answer it, I have nothing but respect for you, and if I didn't, I would tell you. I have nothing but respect for you, though. You were put in a tough spot, and you did a stellar job. After the second-to-last meeting, what I call the gauntlet meeting, where you took, what was it, over 15, I mean, it was some double-digit number that was astronomical, plans, and you called it down to two, which was stellar on your part and on the committee's part, did you have the impression, it's a subjective question, that between that meeting and the final meeting, that some outside factor, or some outside actor or actors stirred up a large contingent of D-4 residents to get them to reach out to redistricting appointees, perhaps to the Commissioners as well, between that second-to-last meeting and the last meeting?
I would say, based on the email traffic, I have to believe that that was the case.
I appreciate that. And I'll talk a little later, after we get through public comment about that, but thank you, sir. I really do appreciate everything you've done with respect to the process. I, you know, even though I'm not necessarily a fan of the plan that's under consideration, the process was as good as it could be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. And I do want to say on the record, thank you to staff, Jim and Abby and James, you know, dealing with everybody, coming in and giving their ideas, you know, stellar work on y'all's part, and want to thank y'all for your hard work on this. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Commissioner Zanka, if you want to go ahead and give your thoughts.
That was close. I know I caught her, but. And thanks to the staff as well. And interestingly enough, that's why I chose Mr. Chrisafoli, former Speaker of the House. I chose Jason Steele, and I chose Rich Workman, because they've all redistricted, you know, at the state level, but at least they've been through the process. So thank you very much, again, for stepping up and for chairing and doing a great job. I think the board did their job. I mean, my instruction to you was very minor, and when you would even ask, you know, if I had any preferences, I wanted to keep the districts as least disrupted as possible. And we can call it the Wyler Plan, Commissioner Lober, but it's really your plan. I mean, that was the plan you promoted, that was the plan you spoke to the board on, and, you know, we talk about Fisher-Purica Plan, I always say Pecriva wrong. And Todd, I'm so sorry if you're watching, but, I mean, I have real issue, and I felt really uncomfortable watching those meetings and seeing you address the board, pushing your plan. And I know that you may have had the purest of intent, you obviously wanted them to go for your plan, but this is why we have the committee. This is why we make those appointees. We tell our appointees, even to the degree of supplying them with maps, which appears is probably what happened, we tell them, this is what we want, this is what we want you to push. But I don't think, as a commission, I don't think it was appropriate that we go to those meetings and speak at every meeting just about what we want, what we want our representatives to do. And whether you meant to intimidate anybody or not isn't the question. I know that for me, I would feel a little uncomfortable if I was an appointee and my Commissioner came to the meetings. I know Commissioner Tabaya went, but Commissioner Tabaya didn't speak or address the board.
And my appointees didn't vote the way I wanted them to.
You did only have one Commissioner.
Two out of three.
And one of my appointees had some health issues, so he couldn't always be there as well, but, I mean, he did his best as well. So, I mean, I think voting for or against a plan, you know, I think, I don't think this plan would be on our agenda, and maybe this is a question for Abby, if you don't mind. I promise not to drill you for 30 straight minutes. If we vote for this plan, is the commission disregarding the Charter?
Disregarding the Charter? I mean, essentially, like I go back to the fact, I felt like both plans were acceptable. Under the Charter, there was definitely differences between the two. I mean, we had one plan that balanced the population, all five versus two, but they're acceptable.
So we're not disregarding the Charter?
We're not disregarding the law?
Disregarding the Charter.
Do you think we're at risk from being removed from office by our governor?
No.
Okay. And would this plan, should the commission vote for it, be defensible?
Yes, I would defend any plan that you adopt, obviously, but I think this, either one is acceptable. That's what I had told the committee that night before they did their final vote.
Okay.
acceptable.
So, we're not disregarding the charter?
We're not disregarding the law?
Disregarding the charter.
Do you think we're at risk from being removed from office by our governor?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe that.
And would this plan, should the commission vote for it, be defensible?
Yes, I would defend any plan that, that you adopt, obviously, but I think this, either one is acceptable, that's what I had told the committee that night before they did their final vote.
Okay, and Commissioner Tabia, I like your idea, I just wish you had brought it to the board, or to their committee sooner, so they would have had the chance to vet it, because I think, I mean, I, not necessarily would have even supported it, but at the same time, I, I would have been more interested to see it a lot sooner. So, obviously, I can't support what you're bringing tonight, because I think that they've done their due diligence and their job, and did the best that they could, so, that's all I have.
Join.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I found all this very interesting. I see an awful lot of emotion involved, and anybody that's spent any time around me realizes that I try and take emotion out of the issues, I look strictly at facts. For me, at this point, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what our growth is going to look like in 10 years, we just don't. We can't see into the future, we don't know where the growth is going to be, or may not be. So, the Fisher-Pecariva Plan disrupts, for me, the least amount of people, and that's really what I'm looking to do at this point in time. From my perspective, 3% is the ideal, but it's not etched in stone. Abby made that very clear many times. I think the majority of the appointed folks that represented this commission endured an awful lot of meetings, they said an awful lot of words, they, they pushed an awful lot of ideas, they kicked them around, and quite simply, the majority, what was it, nine to six, or 10 to five, whatever the vote was, the majority agreed with the Fisher-Pecariva Plan. They heard every single night, every single sentence, every single phrase, every single reason to support it or not support it. They heard Abby's response, that either plan is defensible. They voted, hopefully, they voted based on facts, not on what I want, but on facts, what makes the most sense. And I just think that if we wait 10 years, because, as I mentioned, we don't have a crystal ball, so if we wait 10 years, we don't need a crystal ball, we're going to know where the growth was, and then, that committee will have firm numbers that they can look at unemotionally and come up with another plan. That's my perspective, and that's why I'm going to support this.
Okay, Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and since there hasn't been a second, and clearly...
I was going to let you talk with this.
Yeah, I was going to pull my motion, Madam Chair, if that's acceptable, since there wasn't already a second on it.
Okay, did you want to discuss any of this right now?
I think I was pretty clear with where I was on this. Thank you.
Okay, I, I want to throw out a couple of things here. First of all, when Commissioner Loebur really likes something, he really fights for it. What's interesting to me in this, as I've always told him in the past, what I love the most about him is how he will be very, very risky with things to help get the good done moving forward legally. So, he's got me a little tickled tonight with this, actually. A, a couple of things that I want to mention, I watched all the meetings, and I've, I've got to say this, because it was brought up with Fisher, he threw it out, kind of as saying, hey, Ms. Abby, if it's in the 10%, we actually could get away without changing this at all, and she said, yeah, and then the chair said, it's out of motion, because they, they were getting a little lighthearted with it, and I, it was just something they were talking about, of understanding that whatever they did, that they had a little bit of flexibility here to play with, of doing what was best for the county. Now, the plans that came out, I think, one of my, my fellows, Mr. Jordan, presented one with, with bringing part of Merritt Island, and you're, you're welcome, sir, they didn't do that to you, up to District One and going more across, and I, I listened to them all, and what I, I saw with Mr. Wyler and Loebur's plan, it was interesting too, with moving things around, and when I got out of that, Commissioner Loebur, and you don't have to respond to this, sir, but you're kind of land-tied now, you have no other place to, to grow, so you're going to need to take over other populations. So, I think it was very appropriate to pull in some out of four, because they're concerned about yours growing, so I get all that. But in the midst of this, and I gave you all the chart, and they went over and over, and I'm not going to discuss everything that happened at that meeting, you guys can go watch it if you want, but as far as the, the landmass, we, District One, we are, I'm just going to say this, we are managing so much land up there, of the unincorporated, and the sewer, and the garbage, and it's just a lot, and the unincorporated population, I saw someone sent out saying that Commissioner Smith's got the most, well, he does, but he's got a DRI in that, which is Vera, so he doesn't have to give all the love that we have to with the unincorporated. So, when we're...
Which is good, because I don't have a lot of love.
Yeah, oh, so, you know, looking at that, the, the districts aren't really that far off, they probably needed to move some of Commissioner Smith's, because he is in such a growth bloom, but District One is as well, and I want to throw this out to you, we have 950, I'm sorry, 450 square miles of the whole county, and in that area, right now, I have in permitting 6,900 houses, which is a population of 11,732, which is going to knock me up higher than all the other districts by the end of this year. So, when you consider that, and the growth still going on in there, this is not a perfect science, but, I mean, I, I get having to put more into District Two, he, he's, you don't have any place left for growth, but District One's growing, District Three and Five are growing, District Four kind of took a lot of it here lately, so I think this is a good plan, and, so, I, I'm very comfortable with it, and if, if you guys want to make some more tweaks as far as your districts, I'm good with that, but I really don't want any more population coming into District One right now, because I've got enough coming in, unless you guys want to give me a raise. So, I, I, I am going to support the, the plan that came along with the hybrid, I think it was, it was pretty smart, a lot of focus went into it. I did talk to, to my representatives often, when they were telling me the reasons why they were doing and what they were doing, and I, I put three brilliant people on there, in my opinion, I, I just, I think they're very, very smart, and I watched the board, I think there were, they were, it's a good board, guys, you should sit and watch those meetings sometimes, when you have nothing to do like me, and the, the, the conversations, I, I think they were great, a lot of conversations went on, and everybody got everything they wanted, but hey, that's government, so I am going to vote to support this, this plan tonight. And Commissioner Loebur, one more shot, and we're out.
A few thoughts, and I promise I'm not going to go anywhere near as long as I did the first time, I give you my word on that. I, I want to respond to a couple of things that I've heard from Commissioner Zanka and Commissioner Smith, very briefly, and then I, I want to just bring up an item that I started to broach with Speaker Chris Foley. First, I'm, I'm not going to apologize for having gone to public comment and having made public comment, whereas I could have done in the dark and the shadows, the same thing, where no one would know what direction or thoughts I had, I'm not going to apologize for that. I think anytime we have an opportunity for transparency, especially when it costs nothing, we should strive to make use of that. As far as hearing that either plan is defensible, that I, I heard from my colleague, Commissioner Smith, the exact words that Abby used were, we would defend any plan, or any, we would, is that essentially what you said?
Yes. I would defend any plan that, you know, be adopted.
I laid out ample foundation as to why I believe the particular plan under consideration is illegal. Again, I agree, I don't think the governor's going to remove anyone over this, I'm saying it's a theoretical possibility, if I were betting, man, I bet it ain't going to happen. But, that said, just because we may not have a consequence, doesn't mean that we should, again, disregard our oath and do something that we have strong reason to believe or to know is illegal.
It's not illegal.
I, I beg to differ, I, I've explained why we're going to have to agree to disagree, but I, I want to go down the path of discussing just for a minute, because I, I think it bears worth mentioning, and I think some of these folks who may be happy, seeing the way this is going, don't have a reason to celebrate. What happened? I mean, we, we had, at the second to last meeting, the, the redistricting committee in a particular position, at the last meeting...
Commissioner Loebur, real quick, I'm going to put you on a time, you give me the amount of time you need, just because I, I just...
I'm going to ask for an hour, knowing you're going to bargain me down, it ain't going to take that long.
I'll give you five minutes.
Seven.
Six.
Really?
All right.
Six minutes.
So, the, the bottom line is, we, we had some folks interfering at the very end, that were scaring folks, and essentially suggesting that the sky was going to fall. A lot of folks beachside in D4, and some folks on the mainland in D4. We had folks making arguments that had no specificity whatsoever, if you look at the emails, what they, they lacked in quality, they made up for in quantity, and what I mean is, we had folks saying, well, I don't want the beachside calling shots for the mainland, or vice versa, not realizing that Indian Harbor Beach, South Patrick Shores, and Satellite Beach are already in D4, and it stretches where you're sitting now, you already have both in that. My district has Cocoa Beach, we've got Cape Canaveral, we have Patrick Space Force Base, you know, I live in Rockledge, we've got Cocoa, neither, neither the beachside folks nor the mainlanders are interfering with the other in either of our districts, so it's, it's irrelevant. Where kids go to school, as I heard from a speaker here, BPS does their own redistricting. I live in County Commission District Two, but I live in D4 for BPS purposes, doesn't change if I had a kid that's in school, where that kid would be going to school. The, the fact that we heard that South Patrick Shores is incompatible with D2, it, it's ridiculous. The name South Patrick Shores tells you everything, it's not named North Satellite Beach, and there's a reason. It, it was essentially where the base housing, or portion of the base housing, was for years. There's not a reason in the world that you, you could say that a, an area which was where they stuck their own people, enlisted, maybe some of the officers, I don't know, that were, that were assigned at the time to Patrick Air Force Base, that they, they couldn't be in the same district as, as the Air Force Base, or now the Space Force Base, doesn't make sense. You know, we heard the sky would fall, we heard about quality of representation, we heard about efficiency of county services, I, I talked to staff, and staff laughed when I asked them if I was missing something obvious with respect to that. The folks in Tortoise Island, I appreciate the, the desire to, to stay in one district, I do, I really do. I offered, in fact, the minimal modification to Mr. Wyler's plan, look, I was supportive of his plan, is it the Loebur plan? No, I actually offered a modification to it that wasn't even considered, so it, it is what it is, that would have kept Tortoise Island within one particular district, but the bottom line is, it's already split between a municipality and unincorporated Brevard. If there were ever anything that would impact services, that would be it. I've, I've not seen any specific example as to what would be harmed with respect to any of it. The, the bottom line is, I, I always avoid trying to give the squeaky wheel the grease, unless they just happen to be right. We have a county of over 600,000 people, we had some folks, as Speaker Chris Foley alluded to, who by all indications stirred the pot, and got some folks to the point where they were going bonkers over, over non-issues. But, we are where we are, the bottom line is, I, I don't believe that I ethically can support this plan, I understand it's going to pass, I can't support it ethically, I've taken the oath a number of times to defend the state's constitution, the bottom line is, she's never, and I, I told you why earlier, we went through, she doesn't want her words fed back to her, she's never going to say, if we set our plan is to put, you know, every individual that's over a certain height in a particular district, she's not going to tell you that that's illegal, oh, we'll defend any plan, of course, she can't say anything but that. The bottom line is, as Commissioner Tabia rightly pointed out, I did put her in an awkward spot in, in essentially pushing to get answers to very specific questions. There's, there's a reason that we have access to staff outside of commission meetings and outside of redistricting meetings, and so that we can have blunt conversations where there's not a concern that there's going to be a transcript that's going to be fed back to us down the road. I said I'd keep it to, to six minutes, I'm going to skip the rest of what I was going over, but the bottom line is, I, I think it's a mistake to go down this road, do I think anyone's going to sue us? I don't know, but just because we may or may not get sued, doesn't mean that we should do something that's illegal anyway, so that's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, sir. Abby, real quick, yes, we're going to do that in just a second, this plan, if we vote it through, is it illegal?
I wouldn't say it was illegal, I know, it's a difficult question right now, I know the Commissioner Loebur is not going to be pleased with that answer, but it is not illegal, I would say either plan was acceptable, that the, the committee looked at that night, and they voted for this plan, it does fit within the parameters, we did do adjustments to the districts, there was some testimony by one committee member as to why they were underpopulating one particular district.
But, this plan, if we vote it through, we're not breaking the law.
We're not breaking the law.
Thank you. And, you know, just, just on this, I have to throw this out, I'm going to ask somebody for a motion here, your job, and, and, and you're doing a great job, but your job is to listen to what the county commission's trying to do, and your job is to make sure it's defendable, because we are representing our community the best we can, some of that might be on the line, some of it might be totally different creative, but your job is to listen to what we do and figure out a way if it's defendable.
That is correct.
So, I'm, I'm very comfortable with us doing that, so on that, I'm going to ask if somebody's got a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make, I got it written out, you want me to make it?
Is that good? Ms. Christine?
Be my guest.
Okay, I hereby move to approve the recommendation of the Brevard County Redistricting Committee, and to adopt the resolution approving the 2021 redistricting committee, redistricting plan, setting forth an accurate description of the new county commission district boundaries, directing the clerk to enter the resolution into the board minutes, and directing the county manager or designee to publish notice of the resolution and the description of the approved county commission district boundaries.
We have a motion?
Second.
Of a second by Commissioner Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Passes three, two, with Commissioners Tabia and Loebur in objection, we are going to move into item J4, thank you all. Surprise, this one's yours, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Do we have cards? I think we do.
We do, sir, do you want to do those first?
Yes.
Okay, I have Frank Kingston. That just, sorry, Frank.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Frank Kingston, I live at 10590 South Tropical Trail, Merritt Island, I've been a Florida resident since 1972, I've been a Merritt Island resident since 1996. Tropical Trail, as you know, is adjacent to, and required to use Mather's Bridge on a daily basis. I am also the president and founder of ABS Structural Corporation, that's been in business since 1985, I started in the bridge business in 1968, so that's 53 years, and 3,000 bridges later, I'm still working at it, and I work at it because I, I enjoy it. And I did consult on the Mather's Bridge, I did not do the fabrication drawings for it, my engineering services company provides the fabrication and erection drawings, I build bridges and rebuild bridges, I do not design bridges. I do the fabrication drawings, and I tell people how to put it together. I did consult on Mather's Bridge for Camber issues, because I was working with Florida Structural Steel on numerous other projects at the time, and they ran into a few issues that they just didn't have the proper experience for, so I did not do the job, but I fully understand, and I've done many just like it. Basketle bridges, vertical lift bridges, swing span bridges, all come under what you would call draw bridges, they're movable bridges. About 20, 25 years ago, Florida DOT produced a campaign to say we have to get rid of all the movable bridges, as many as we can. The reasons that we had to get rid of them is for the same reasons we are here tonight, they're very expensive, they break a lot, and they don't provide adequate pass-through for maritime traffic. Mather's Bridge was built just recently, at a cost of, I don't know how much, because it's not published, but I'm here to tell you that we're wearing that bridge out, and 1,400 cycles a month is beyond imagination. But the main thing I want to point out here, on the Florida Intercoastal Waterway Guide, the package that I gave you last night, the clearance being closed on Mather's Bridges seven to eight feet, that means it has to be open for anything but a flats boat or a John boat. And of the 45 bridges on the intercoastal, 31 are on timed openings, but all the other ones have clearances of 25 to 27 feet, that ceiling's probably 18 feet, so they might open three times a month.
Thank you, sir.
Could I ask him?
Yes, Commissioner Smith's going to ask you a question.
So, if 27 of the 45, is that what you said?
31 of the 45 have timed openings.
31 of the 45, open now, and that's on the intercoastal, which...
Yeah, that's from mile marker 777 to 1089. Basically, the whole intercoastal from Daytona just floored.
So those are boats from 20 feet to 120 feet and bigger?
Yes.
Okay. So that's important for us to know. Because if those boats have to endure waiting for a bridge to go up when they're out in open water, that's tidal water probably, with winds and currents to deal with, that's a lot more difficult than a small boat that has to sit in or around Mathers Bridge with no appreciable winds, no tidal at all.
Right. The Mathers Bridge is too small for ocean traffic or maritime traffic. No barge will fit through Mathers Bridge. You can sit there and watch it all day long. There are, it's all recreational boating. And I just think from a fiscal responsibility, that county, you're looking at $20 million to replace that bridge, or more. And it's hard to put a handle on that right now, because the price of raw structural steel has doubled in the last 12 months. And that's what the bridge is made, rebar structural steel and concrete. And people consult me and say, well, we'll wait till the price goes down. The price is not going down. The price of anything is not going down.
Commissioner Loeb has a question for you as well.
Yeah, actually, more of a comment. I just want to thank you, actually. And I'm not being sarcastic or facetious at all. I really do mean it. You sent an excellent email over the past couple of days that had a PDF in it. You were probably one of the most effective folks that I've seen in lobbying this particular board. I can't imagine I was the only commissioner to receive it. I don't remember.
No, they all, everyone.
But you did an excellent job without the emotion articulating what your specific concerns were and justifying. And I just, I wish more people did what you do, because frankly, that's the kind of email where it's got, you know, it really has the ability to convince folks. I'll tell you, I had an opinion before I read that, and you definitely shifted my opinion with it. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vince Lamb, sir? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Vince Lamb, 11590 Dragon Point Drive, awfully close to Mathers Bridge. When we experienced a trial period of half-hour openings in 2018, I thought we had found the perfect solution. Like many other bridges in Florida, the boaters were present for the timed openings, and the vehicle operators learned to avoid those times. I was a bit shocked to learn that the recreational boaters had managed to convince the Coast Guard to return to on-demand openings. An explanation was offered that most of the drivers were retired people with plenty of time. Well, during the working hours on weekends, I'm confident that the majority of the vehicle drivers crossing Mathers Bridge are either working or commuting to and from work. The residences on Merritt Island require maintenance services as well as construction services, so a lot of them are spending time waiting for an open bridge. Then there's the issue of the wear and tear on the bridge. In 46 years on Dragon Point, I've experienced two maintenance and repair shutdowns that lasted six months or longer. For most of these times, the bridge was unable to accommodate boats or vehicles. I hope to never experience a lengthy shutdown for that type of repair. Few of the issues that you face as commissioners have such a clear solution. Please pass this resolution and ask the Coast Guard to limit the openings to half-hours.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Percy Jobert or Pierre?
Yeah, Pierre Jobert.
You said it so much better.
Do I still have him with us?
Yes, he's not here.
Okay, then I'm going to close public comment. Commissioner Smith, this is your district, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that unless any of you guys have any other questions regarding whether we should move forward with timed openings, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt this resolution and pursue the Coast Guard and their judgment to allow us to have timed openings to save wear and tear on this bridge.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes five, zero. We are moving into board reports. County manager, sir.
No, excuse me, no report.
County attorney, ma'am.
I just want to thank the commission for a fun inaugural meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. No report. Trial by fire. Commissioner Loeb, sir.
This, although it certainly does pertain to the vote that we had earlier on redistricting, I just offer this as a word of caution moving forward with other issues that may involve county legal. Just as we have our own opinions, I think it's important to bear in mind that we oftentimes put county legal in a spot where they're forced to defend things that may not be terribly defensible. And what I mean by that, look at Blue Origin. The folks that were here and voted for the Blue Origin item, I'm sure they thought it was perfectly legal. Wasn't so. The invocation lawsuit, you make a decision, they've got to do the best they can with what they've got. Invocation lawsuit, not so much so. Jail overcrowding years before I even came to the county, actually, this was, I think, maybe '83. This was a long while ago. It's an issue.
It was before you were born.
You know, if you'd said the opposite, I might be mad, Commissioner Smith, but I'll take that as a compliment, sir. Bottom line, and I'm not trying to pat my back, I called the Blue Origin item right. I called the charter cap right. On the other side of things, jail overcrowding, invocation. I'm not saying that I'm infallible with respect to my opinion, but the point is, I'm going to give you a blunt opinion. Our county attorney, whether we're talking about Eden before or Abby now, is never going to say anything more than she has to that could put the county in a disadvantage. My goal isn't asking her the questions that I was asking her. It wasn't to make her uncomfortable. Actually, she's a trial attorney. I think she kind of gets it. So I promise you that we don't have any issue with respect to that. The goal was to try to persuade folks and inform folks of where we were at, in the hopes that we could avoid potentially creating an unfortunate situation. I will tell you, now that that's done, legality aside, I'm actually happy with the map. I know that may come across as absolutely crazy or insincere, but the fact of the matter is, I've got a lot less unincorporated area that I have to devote a set number of hours to, so I can devote more time to Merritt Island, to Cocoa, to Rock ledge, Cape Canaveral, Cocoa Beach. It's great. So I like it in terms of a make-my-life-easy standpoint. And I don't want anyone to think that, you know, I have an issue with respect to any particular area in the county. I think that, you know, we each have our areas that are more problematic than others. And frankly, whether it's five years from now or whether it's 10 years from now, I think a lot of the issues that we've experienced now, assuming we don't get sued in the interim, are going to be moot anyway. So when it gets redistricted, I don't think the options are even going to be there to leave it as it currently is. So that's all I've got.
Commissioner Tobias?
No report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind everybody about No Shave November. I almost forgot. I just started, I just started wearing my, growing my beard about three days ago. So it's not like it used to be. So it might take till the end of November before I get it to be a beard, but I'm making the effort.
I was actually kind of concerned that you forgot to shave before you came, so I'm glad you told us.
Yeah. The shabby look has a purpose. And we have Mr. Denninghoff. He's got a head start. And of course, Mr. Tobias, Commissioner Tobias, he's got a head start. And Ian, he's and Jerry Visco.
Jerry.
And Mr. Walker.
They're cheaters.
Yeah. No, they're not cheaters. They're in the spirit 12 months here. And I just wanted to mention that I've been doing this since I first took office back in 2014. And who would have known that three, four years later, I'd get prostate cancer myself? So you just never know about stuff. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zonka?
The only thing I have is, I just want to thank everyone that's here tonight for your patience with this board. And I thank staff for all the time you put into redistricting. I really appreciate it. And wish everybody have a good week.
That's a really good word, because we really made you guys sit through a lot tonight. So thank you for staying. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just have to mention this. When we brought up the Blue Origin, the premise of what we did really wasn't the issue. The question was on whether to pay it out all at once, what we promised them for the initiative, or whether it was going to be in bonds. And we sent it through to the guy who makes those decisions. And this was the other clerk of courts that was challenging it. But again, with any legal issue, there's, it's always based on law. You find your cases and see which way the judge is going to side with. Law can always go one way or the other. So that's why it's good, as Commissioner Loeb does from time to time, takes all these risks. As far as the invocations, I got to tell you this, that was our county attorney's recommendation. So we went with his recommendation on that one, and we lost that one. And so you know what? Even with Abby, I expect her to make some mistakes. But as we move through this, Ms. Abby, I expect you to stay as impartial as possible and find ways to represent us as we come up with our majority opinions on what we do moving forward. So I just want to say that. And welcome aboard, ma'am. You're going to do a great job.
They're not mistakes. They're opinions. And that same clerk of court that you mentioned, he was fond of saying, if you want 20 different opinions on a legal issue, ask 20 attorneys. Because they all have their own opinion, and so that's why it goes to a judge, and then the judge gets to have the only opinion that matters.
Rest five different commissioners even.
Yeah.
So we can all get different opinions with it all, too. But I just wanted to say that. You guys have a great evening, and I hope you're getting ready to enjoy the holidays a little bit. God bless.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public...